Landing compared to two years ago.
Well, seven o'clock is Tom gonna be here?
I haven't heard from Tom.
I see his pickup wasn't there when I come this way.
Oh.
And uh.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, right. Well, anyway, we'll call meeting order. First thing is stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Oh, we got the approval agenda, maybe we have Jeff here. Yep, we're so from the service department, maybe we'll put you up first and then we go to Bolton and make that way you guys can go do your stuff and. Make that a change to that. Anybody else with any changes? If not, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
On favor side.
I.
We'll, we'll carry. Now here comes Tom. We'll give him a minute to get in here. We already started by where you thought we'd give you a minute to get in.
Is that a birthday party?
For a little cot, they're very important to it. Yep. Alrighty, well, we changed the agenda a little bit, Tom, put the sheriff up first and Bolton make second, so.
Sounds good.
Go ahead, Jeff. We got two Jeffs.
Um, you know, I was invited here to to meet you guys and to answer the question you have, so. Um, I guess if everything's still going for the deputy Gerkey.
What? With our liaison?
Yeah.
Yeah. Does that ever get switched up?
So, um, she was, it was assigned to a permanent overnight shift for a while, which is gonna be through the end of the year and then she'll go back to to be around ordering the day. Um, like with next March, she's gonna be a canine, she's gonna get a dog. In training for for a few months, so that's something we're gonna talk about. I wanted to see if you guys are interested in maybe getting somebody, somebody else. I haven't heard you better otherwise, so.
Yeah. I guess if we have the opportunity, myself, I'd like to see. Different individual take that position.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know what the rest of you feelings are towards that.
Yeah, there's been a few conflicts in the past, so.
Okay.
I'm sure you've heard them, so.
Um, you know, rumors.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, oh, yeah, we'll, uh, talk with, uh, captain, get stupid, find something else.
Perfect. So then the patrolling, um, when.
But we could build by. Build the liaison but or whomever, like if you have. Not Nicole at the time, just driving to, they can do it, drive by the streets and it's kind of random and what's going on in the day, isn't it for your deputies?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically when I look, they're they're doing contract ICRs here, um, a lot of times in the morning, there are few times, and then they'll come through throughout the day, and then there's quite a bit at night, too.
I know school started now, and I mean, when we had Kyle, I'll tell you what, that guy was in town every morning about quarter to seven. And just get set it like clockwork and he made his rounds and he was here for them little tots getting on, you know? I guess that's the only thing I haven't seen this school year, which is only a week old.
Yeah.
You know, if they could just be there, drive by them buses when they're loading, maybe once in a while, that would deter anybody from.
degrees.
Some, some. Different activities. Otherwise, I don't think since we've gotten the sheriff's department, we've had one complaint.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think, I think everybody has. Gotten accustomed and. Everybody gets along.
And, um, after talking with the chief deputy, I forget his name.
Jeremy.
Yes, Jeremy. If if a citizen has or sees something going on, the best thing is to do, call nine one one, whether it is a life, life or death, or just.
Because when you call nine one, they get the phone call, uh, that's recorded in case they need to go back and listen, so that's the best number to call.
Okay. Yeah, I think we just need to get community more. I think everybody's a little bit gun shy to, well, probably wrong term term to use, but a little afraid to use nine one one when it's not necessarily emergency.
That's what we want.
They think they might get in trouble for calling.
Yeah. And as far as, uh. You know, we got some habitual people that park on the wrong side of the street, on narrow streets. Would it ever help to knock on the door and say, you know, you you shouldn't, these face traffic.
Close, that's something to it, we'll get someone else down here, um, and yeah, no, I've got no problem knocking on people's doors.
But as far as messy yards and that, you're not gonna come out and help do any of that.
I think we're talking with Jeremy and with Chris and entity, yeah, it's just nothing. I I don't have the staff to go around and check every messy yard in all the cities in the county, so and that's what we ended up getting into.
Right.
Yeah. So that's our problem, it's always been our problem, and it continues to be our problem. Yeah.
You know, have you talked to county environmental services about any of that?
Who would be the head of that now down there?
I think now it's not kind of, but I'll have to double check and who handles those hatchers things. Yeah, some people laugh, but.
Okay.
Especially if it's a hazardous waste type of thing, so.
Yep, yep. Or rodent.
Right.
Yep. All right. Well, that's all I have. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for, just wanted to meet you.
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe some of these, got my cell number on an email so you can pass it on, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Jeff. Alrighty, we got Bolton and Mink people here, we got Jeff Thomas and, uh.
Joe Smith.
There you go, Joe.
Messy one.
Which one? Yeah. That one right there. You know, last meeting. So, and, um, but there, the dark ball, the testing and some, uh, I had, uh, uh, results from my monitoring, the full monitoring that was completed, so. He was basically put this, uh, what you have in front of you, uh, thinking handed out tonight.
Yes, I did.
Have you had a chance to review, good, yeah, but I mean, I'm gonna do a good job to summarize what that, what that says, hit some of the high points and then. Also, you're welcome to take a look at it and then, um, read through it. Next meeting, if there's any questions or even give me a call or Joe a call, we can try to answer those, so, but, uh, yeah.
Alright.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so the memorandum in front of you, did I give you one time? Yes, okay, it's it's rather lengthy here, but we'll go through, summarize everything and like Jeff noted, maybe good if you could, if you get the opportunity in the coming days to review and. And give either of us a call and we can go through the highlighted areas, but. I think it's important to remember kind of why we're here from the beginning as we, with the city's new permit, it got all cities now. We had to submit a I N I evaluation plan to the M P C A. And Good Thunder's up against what we're up against as a community, it's excess wastewater flows versus the water usage that we've talked about the last few meetings here. So the first thing we did was we did the sanitary sewer flow analysis. We acknowledged that the western half of the city, in particular, the northwest half. At the most volume of excess water when we got that five inch rainfall event, I think it was in the middle of May roughly. So the next step we did is we did smoke testing on the western half of the city, um, pretty much from Halliday Street to Front Street kind of to the west there. So through the the smoke testing, we we did not find any direct connections between the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer system. So, you know, you can interpret that as a good thing or a bad thing, right? The the good thing is we we ruled out a surface connection for the western half of the city, so that's a good thing. And in a sense, it's a bad thing is it maybe got rid of the easy, quick fix for reducing I N I in the western half of the city. Now, where we have to transition our mindset a little bit here is there maybe isn't that one quote unquote smoking gun we can fix, but what we did look into is a couple other options for reducing the I N I. In the western half of the city and the city as a whole. So since we we ruled out the the direct connection, there are a couple other things that we've noted here. One, one item is, well, sanitary sewer castings, this wouldn't be a large volume of water, but we noted during the smoke testing, we're setting up the smoke machine on these manholes. We're getting the smoke to blow out the two open pickles on all the sanitary sewer manhole castings. Be a good idea or recommended to replace those castings with a concealed pickle to eliminate surface water from entering. A lot of times the sanitary sewer casting's in the center of the crown of the road, so it's not a lot of water, but we did find a few that are kind of right next to the gutter line there. Where there could be a fair amount of water entering through those open pickles.
Especially in a heavy rain like.
Especially in a heavy rain and race noted, because race was present there with us, small testing. And a couple, he he's seen isolated areas of flooding on top of those sanitary sewer manholes during heavy rainfall events. So we ran some calculations and if if you got some head pressure on top of that, you know, actual pounding water, tho- those things could start to take a good, a good amount of water, but. It also have to be a large rainfall event to probably see that water pushing through.
Joe had mentioned, I was gonna chime in real quick, you know, if we had, the curb is about six inches tall, and so if the water was ponded in the curb above one of those sanitary sewer manholes in a local low point. You, and there's no other way for the water to escape other than going to the ground or through those pickles. Um, we've, uh, the permit would be about thirty eight, thirty eight gallons per minute would be contributing. Through the, through those two pickles, believe it or not, those two and inch and a half pickles, so, um, over time, that gets to add up. Um, you know, in ten minutes, that's, uh, twenty or eighty gallons, so.
What does a garden hose put out per minute?
Well, some pump can pump up just.
No, I mean, a garden hose.
Yeah. I don't know if I have the answer. Trying to think, if you fill your five gallon pail, I mean.
Yeah.
Um, it depends on what.
But like you say, it's thirty eight gallons a minute, does that pick, but they do make plugs for those, right?
Yeah, that would be an option. I think the plugs create some challenges to getting ripped out with snow blowing operations, now that road maintenance.
Then you don't have to worry about it in the winter time, it's frozen, so if you have to replace them in the summer, you know, for the summer rain events.
Yeah, putting some plugs in them would be adequate. Okay, so that was one, uh, identifier from the smoke testing. Another one, I think you, the council is aware of. There's an alley about a hundred and eighty feet south of Main Street, Bull Street, kind of Iran called place there that we got smoke flowing out of a, out of a sinkhole in the concrete apron there. So identified a failed sanitary sewer main, so we're certainly proposing or recommending to replace that sanitary sewer main going up the alley. And one thing in the appendix of this report, there's a cost estimate and a figure for replacing that sanitary sewer main going up the alley. I think it was about eighty grand to replace it, to replace the sanitary sewer main services and reconstruct the two minutes alley. So you'll see that in the, in the appendix for this report, that included construction costs and survey and engineering costs as well.
Everybody is very busy to get them to come out and do that, small projects, you know, but race has talked to about three different individuals and.
Okay.
And I think he's, might be able to get somebody out here yet this fall, we gotta really.
Yeah, I would, I have some concerns having that go into winter. Are you thinking, Mr. Mayor, to replace the sewer main going all the way up the alley or?
Well, we had it videoed here, uh, a week or two ago, I believe, and, uh, the first, uh. The guy with the video camera, he did a very good job and he marked it and, uh, out of the township hall going to the east. It was probably a hundred and hundred, maybe a little over a hundred feet or a hundred and ten. And from that point there, it was very good.
Okay.
Going back to township hall, but from that point, it just needs to be replaced.
Okay.
So we probably won't be doing it all.
Okay, understood. So I noticed kind of as the the alley comes up the hill, it seemed like there was some snowment in the centerline of the alley there as you're going back, so I was curious if there is.
And there's a fifty pair and a two fifty pair and a five hundred pair. Wires right where they need to dig.
Sure, underground or overhead?
Underground.
Underground, okay.
That's kind of deterred some of them from coming in town, too.
Okay.
Cause it's, could be a lot of handwork.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, you you'll find those, the the figure and estimate there in the report, um, in the appendix of the reports. Okay, uh, one, another finding or recommendation from the smoke testing, the sanitary sewer structures, uh, just east of Shabbat Street where the sanitary sewer main. Holiday Street comes down, there's kind of a drainage swale, and the sanitary sewer goes, goes up parallel to Halliday Street and then cuts over to Front Street there, kind of all through that grassy area. We didn't get, I know we had heard rumors that when rural water was here, it got some smoke coming out of the earth there. We didn't get smoke coming out of the earth, but we did get smoke coming out of the brick and mortar joints from two sanitary sewer manholes that are down in that little area. Sanitary sewer manholes are sticking up out of the ground a knee height or knee height or so, so coming out of the brick and mortar joints, there's some smoke there. So a big recommendation from, from this report here is to get in there and replace that sanitary sewer main. There is no televising available. One thing I'll quickly interject is Empire Pipe Services actually televised the whole city of Good Thunder from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. And we worked with them the last month or so to obtain that report from them. And we'll get into that here, but we we reviewed a good portion of that televising, but they weren't able to get their equipment down into kind of that grassy swale area, so they didn't televise that particular run. But based on the condition of the manholes that we're seeing and the relatively shallow depth that sewer pipe, we can assume that the the clay sewer pipe isn't in the best condition. Given the shallow nature, it could be acting as sort of a drain tile underneath that drainage swale.
Always thought that, yep, and absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's running directly under that drainage.
That's, that's north, north of Maine, right?
That's correct, north of Maine, yeah, parallel to Halliday, uh, just coming off of Shabbat Street and extension of Shabbat Street.
Okay. We should just do that.
But it used to be a waterway years ago, anyway.
Yeah.
It always be there.
You'll find that in the appendix report, a figure and a cost estimate to replace that sanitary sewer in that area that we're talking about. What was the number off the top of my head here?
Is that the one of the one?
Yeah, that's. And that would be to, if you look at the figure, it kind of altered these sanitary sewer main. Up to the north, where those services have all come out of the backyard, it's of those homeowners along the Shabbat Street there, or excuse me, Halliday Street there in the back yard. So you'll see on the figure, it's eleven by seventeen map, I believe it is the second to last page maybe. I think the last page, excuse me, or second. Second to last, second to last page, there are some, like pipes we showing green on the second to last. Got there, Robert? Uh, now they include, speeding that up to the north. Replace that where those services come in. And, uh.
Like a Y there?
If that's correct, here now, any pipe that you would see green on that would be a proposed replace eight inch, uh, sanitary sewer main.
Where that swell is, there can't be three feet of dirt over that pipe, I don't think, can there?
Yeah, well, it was hard to gauge, cause I could look at the cover in the manholes, and I was kind of trying to give it the eye, the swell cuts through there, and you know, at the manhole, if it's only eight feet deep or so, it's like probably like seven hours now, it's not up there.
And that used to stand full, that used to be drainage.
Okay.
Stormwater drainage off of Main Street years ago, but now they got redirected and goes south. Under the street, but it used to go north there, it started on, well, right, north, on the north side of the elevator there by the body shop that all used to drain to the north.
Okay, I believe it still does drain up to the north to storm sewer structure and then. There's like a big storm sewer overflow structure when you're down.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
So there, there is a lot of stormwater being conveyed on top, right, direct on top of that sanitary sewer pipe, so we feel that it's a good bang for your buck in terms of potential I N I elimination. We don't rip up roads.
Yeah.
Streets, gravel, curb and gutter and everything.
We've talked about that for years, we have.
Okay. Continue on, get through this, nice big memo here. The next thing we did, we we got through the smoke testing and then, like I noted, we worked with Empire Pipe to obtain a copy of all the televising. They did a citywide televising from nineteen, or seventeen to nineteen, twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. So it is, we didn't review all of the televising at this time, we reviewed it for that northwest corner of town, we've seen the highest amount of I N I. And what we're finding is that those sanitary sewer mains are at the end of their lifespan, that northwest part of town. Uh, meaning their their clay sanitary sewer mains with up to about twenty to twenty five kind of cracks or defects in a three hundred foot length of pipe we're finding. So what we did is if we continue through the memo a little bit. We'll get to a eleven or eight and a half by eleven, that kind of has, we'll take colors and do pictures and. So what we did, these are the areas we reviewed, and see that. Line Street and Shabbat Street, Middle Street, Minor Street, Main Street, so we reviewed all the televising for that portion of town. And the age prior to this one lifts off those. Uh, manhole, both manhole IDs, we call them upstream manhole and downstream manhole, you see in the chart there. Um, those corresponding numbers show up on a map also in this report here. So essentially, what what we did is we, we reviewed the televising, we noted how many cracks or defects there are, and then the length of the pipe and the pipe material. And then gave it a, a condition, you know, good, poor, fair, extremely poor. The three highlighted in yellow, we're calling extremely poor, there, there's some very concerning defects in those sanitary sewer pipes. Uh, we tried to give a few snapshot, snapshots of the few that were probably most concerning to us, uh, that we're seeing there and. Empire Pipe Services, they also give a rating per defect, they have a one through five scale. So the ones in in yellow had a few items that were kind of that five out of five, I mean, their most concerning, um, attempt of immediate failure in those areas. So those three highlighted in yellow are, we're just encouraging the city to maybe start to do a little planning to, to consider a street reconstruction project in those areas. Because that sanitary sewer main is, is at the end of its lifespan.
So that would be from the manhole cover to, uh.
Yeah, though, for those, for those ranges that highlighted the yellows there, I mean, it would, it would be from manhole to manhole, for those lengths of, of roadway. And as, as you guys know, those projects do have a tendency to, to grow amongst themselves, given if the wa- the condition of the water main or other utilities in the roadway there. The two of them along Shabbat Street and then the west end of of Main Street there as well.
Ooh, my.
You could water main. Uh, current size in that area?
Those areas, I want to have that up and.
Yeah, you want to remain like these four fixings largest, um, chances are in that area, if that's all original water main, it's probably four inch. Um.
I don't know, I bet you it's six up there.
I don't know, that's what I was wondering.
It could be. You got your, is that on the map there, I think? Water rap? It's in the water? Don't remember being that big of a.
Pretty sure that that corner of town, it probably got pretty good adequate water supply.
Sure. I know. One time. You know, I think it was back in, ten fifteen years ago, we modeled it. Based on what we saw, there are a few areas that were, um, deficient, I guess, according to what the model was showing. Um, and, well, no, I know the one down on thirty south on the Halliday Street, out of that hydrant there, that was really, really bad.
Because if you crank them open to flush them, you got very good water pressure. If you compare that to Holiday Street down there, you just hardly gets out of hydrant. At the very end.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard to say, it could be, uh, four, six, or even eight, I don't think. We have much greater than eight at all.
No, I don't, I'd say we got a six inch water main probably covering most of that.
This isn't to say that the sanitary sewer pipe is kind of failed tonight, it's in something within, there are a few areas that.
Well, we lined a lot of pipe a few years ago, is this a candidate, some of this stuff for lining? Versus digging up a blacktop road and, uh.
Is it a candidate for like, you know, it. Some of the offset joints and stuff will make lining challenging, that's a conversation we could have with Empire Pipe and see what their thoughts are. It probably wants to be recommendation number one, but it may be feasible.
Along with lining, if if it was doable, how long would lining prolong the life of the pipe? Cause I mean, eventually, if some of those have those big of a cracks, then that's what? Five to. Six years ago, when those videos were taken, you know, have they, have they gotten worse now, you know? Probably.
Probably so.
Oh, no condition.
Empire Pipe will list, and they kind of list the one through five, being that they see imminent failure within.
It's like that was put in there, okay.
That being said, getting to that point.
This picture here. How can that be, it looks like the whole thing is.
Which one?
Offset.
Yeah.
Yeah, how, how can it, it could happen at the time of backfilling, that's probably the most likely scenario for a joint.
That one in the center?
How's this one right here?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good two inches result, it kind of looks like it's deflecting horizontally.
And because it's got water pooled on that one side of it, too.
Yeah, so when they're, they're always going upstream to downstream, going with the flow of water, so that water's like dammed up back at us, back at the camera there.
Oh, really?
Hmm.
Because it's trying to get past that joint, right, and that's back, and it's damming it up.
When, when they, um, really line sanitary sewer pipe, the liners are 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 very good, they'll last a long, long time. As long as the veterans pipe, that's by clay pipe, it's one of those inert products that it just, it, it's, it's very good, it doesn't decay in wastewater. So if, if, or veterans play pipe could be installed with good joints that are, it's good to joints that you have a day and then backfilled such that the cracking is minimal. If more, no cracking occurs, it would be a very good product because it's gonna last a long, long time. The challenge of veterans play pipe is that it's very brittle. And it doesn't take much, you get a little ground movement or anything, it'll start to crack and then you got a, you got a bigger problem on your hands. Some of the things that, um, Joe had mentioned about sanitary, you mentioned about well, occupation of the pipe. Some of the things that I guess you saw during your investigation was that there's portions of the pipe that are physically not there, I mean, they're just, there's, if you look up, there is dirt.
Uh huh, yeah.
So, um, it's kind of spooky because what could happen then, over time, they're gonna see a clays, that's one advantage to having clays, but. Um, over time, if that was sand, you can imagine what happened, you can have a sinkhole there developed, so. It a matter, only a matter of time before you get a sinkhole develop and then, uh, something, a bigger problem, but. Um, a liner, don't get me wrong, lining is good in the right application, um, some of these. Like, I'm not doing that sort of thing, so maybe, yeah, all you're doing is bandating, you're not gonna really.
Right.
Problem.
Yeah, yeah. So this, uh, that line down there, that we've been talking about replacing there in that, behind those houses. Obviously, there's an established, right, uh, easement already. But before any work would be done, we'd have to make sure that's in place. And there would be an easement there already, right?
Well, we thought that.
But I mean, we've gotten in trouble by not searching out.
I'm sure, I can't, couldn't believe there wasn't, but now there.
Yeah, so I mean. Where do you find that? If there was an easement established there seventy five years ago.
Yeah, we would have to pull some title work from our office, you can.
Well, yeah, yeah, what, um, what, what would happen is, um. I had to hire a title agency and a title company, um, and they, they don't charge a lot of money, but, you know, they charge money with their research. That area, I can confirm what kind of easements they were available, and then, you know, property descriptions and that, but. You know, you bring up a good point, because you know, a lot of sanitary sewer in town, especially that when we saw it down, you know, just west of the highway there, the old highway. Um, there wasn't anything there.
Yeah, right. If, if we'd want to go in there and replace this and we find that the first sixty feet has got an easement, this doesn't have an easement, so.
Cause this used to be the old railroad track line right through here, right, through the.
Well, it. It, it wasn't right where the railroad tracks were, it's on that side. Uh, it would be on the. The, be on the west side of the railroad tracks.
Okay.
You know, cause that was there established when the railroad tracks were already running through town. So I guess, you know, we've said many times that we need to redo this. I got thinking about. We need to make sure there's an established easement from one end to the other before we start doing anything, or we get, get somebody out here and start and then it have stopped, cause you guys ain't got an easement.
Well. Are we, are we all kind of going down the road that we need to do that project?
Absolutely.
I mean, I agree, that, that's the eighty thousand dollar project, right?
That's right.
Okay.
My, excuse me, I don't remember, I missed one, but I'm incorrect. Eighty thousand dollars was the out, was the alley.
The alley, but this one's the one eighty one.
Okay, oh, alright. That's a hundred and eighty one.
One eighty one.
Okay, I'm glad I asked. Alright. Hundred and eighty one thousand dollars and. That's just the line going through that drainage.
If everything's showing on that map and app there. If everything's shown on that map there, Tom.
Whatever this is. Boy, up here too, that's Jane Winter's show and. Even even going.
Whatever is green, right?
That's replacing everything green. Because when you guys did Holiday Street, Jeff, did you go down to? You went from Holiday a little bit east, right?
Yes.
But there's 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 two manholes area?
Well, there that's we're not a hundred percent sure how that'll lay out there, we're getting a final design, that that pipe was coming in real steep there. Leaving Halliday, so the two manholes right now is showing, one is kind of a a grade break manhole. And the other one is to turn the pipe. In the final design, we may be able to eliminate one of those two manholes.
Okay.
But where where the green starts is where we left off with the Halliday project.
So there's no. No streets ripped up in this part of the project?
There's a portion of front where it's a connect.
Just that little.
And that is all clay. What you got short here, green is all clay right up to that ma- uh manhole on Front Street.
That's correct.
Okay. How about going north or going continuing east there on Flynn Street?
That that's still clay sanitary sewer pipe, yeah, but that's where we put in one of the flow monitors directly in that manhole, so I'm familiar with that one.
That's where you put the new line back here.
One thing we don't know for sure about this map is that exact alignment of how that sewer runs to the north, that green line we have shown going up to the north. There's not a manhole that I could find on the very north end of that system to to locate exactly that alignment, but this is our best guess of how that gets up there.
So would it ever be beneficial if we got? Whoever uh a locator out here and found out, so we know exactly where that's running?
Extremely beneficial, and if you did that, I would. Love it if somebody would give me a call there and I could come on, we could GP, I could GPS for that.
Yeah, because we did that, Paul came down and opened up the township hall down there and. He got in there, well, then we've seen there was a cleanout on the outside and we all missed that, but anyway, it was very beneficial to know exactly.
Yeah.
Footages where they went into them other houses and all that.
That would be extremely beneficial.
Cause we could be doing this anytime.
Yeah.
You know. And see the. The body shop and the locker. They have a private line running over here somewhere to hook in.
Yeah, that that's correct. Yeah, I believe it it directly connects right now into one of those existing sanitary manholes down at the bottom there. It's a white PVC pipe coming into one of those manholes from the south.
Okay, yeah.
Bottom.
Yeah, okay.
When I've been looking in there, it's got some water flowing through it. That would be, you know, wide in, you know, the service wide into the main east and west line there.
Yeah, okay.
Oh my, that's a lot to digest. That's a lot to digest.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, yeah.
That's why we kind of talk a lot here tonight and uh. Let's do everything, I guess everything and then there's an interconnection. You know, happy to come back next meeting or you answer telephone calls or whatever you want.
The uh plus your engineering costs that's in there, does that include preparing bids and specs if we went? A bid?
Yeah, that's everything.
That is, okay.
Twenty-five percent, I think he included, well, to good part about it is. You know, financing, a lot of times, a lot of communities don't have financing available, they have to bond for the improvement, bonding cost money. Uh, if you choose to do that with reserves that you have, uh, that cost would probably drop. That twenty-five percent would drop because that includes.
All right, yeah, we probably would. We probably use internal funds.
Have.
Yeah.
Reserves, yeah.
Um, this whole. This whole infrastructure thing, you know, that the federal government is putting there, there's new sewer uh. Plants being built all over the United States. I suppose I don't ever cover lining your existing pipes. And uh like replacing down there that private, or I call it private line, but does is any of that qualify? We're we're improving our infrastructure, but chances are they want to dug out. Not any lining maybe, huh, or does anybody know?
Yeah, maybe, yeah. We had um last, what was it, it was a few meetings ago, Chelsea Alger from our office came down with. Joe and I and talked about funding and uh talked a little bit about that Chelsea here before we uh came down today. Because I know that question always comes up and um, you know, there's some. Talked to everybody, there's a lot of money, a lot of funding available out there for everything, seems like. Uh, the problem is most of rural rural America, rural Minnesota. They're all on the same predicament, they got aged infrastructure and they all. But need improvements, they need the money, so um. When it comes to actual financing or uh dollars available for that sort of thing. There are some, um, we we talked to Chelsea, the doctor about the. The PFA or the uh Clean Water Revolving Fund, PFA is for water improvements. That you could use for water main improvements, for wells. Water treatment plants or whatever, that sort of thing. Um, and the Clean Clean Water Revolving Fund is um funding that we could can be used for sanitary sewer improvements. Uh, structure improvements, that sort of thing. Um, and maybe you don't call, but I know. Cities, city and household income here in the city. Very fortunate in the city, uh, you don't have too many debt related to that. I think that's something. Not typical, I guess, so what happens is, um, when you have more need for financing than. More debt and you tend to be a little higher on the list. So any time.
Well, that and our and our our um. Average income residents is so high.
Right.
In Good Thunder compared to the rest of.
One point two percent of your median household income in two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one is unbelievable, I mean, it's like seventy-four thousand dollars or something like that. One point two percent of that, that means people can afford it before any financing would be available, any grant money would be available, free month. Not the free, but you know, grant dollars.
Right.
Your water rates would be to be somewhere in the seventy dollar per month range.
Right.
Um, wastewater would be something close to that or eighty bucks per month range, so.
Right.
We did take a look at um using small cities. Which, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes.
Small cities might be an option for you for. Um, you know, improvement in the northwest part.
Yep, so so small cities is is a another grant opportunity, free money, kind of like Jeff had noted there. Uh, the maximum amount you can get is six hundred thousand dollars. And what what you need to show is that over fifty-one percent of the the population qualifies for a low income bracket. Right now, Good Thunder is estimated to be at forty-two percent, so you need to swing at nine percent one way, obviously, um. And the way to do that is we've had other communities around us be successful in this, is you can you can send out letters, surveys to all the residents in town. And when you get these surveys back, we just need to show, we need to, we don't need everyone in the city to give us one back and it to be fifty-one percent. What we do is we take the census data we have, okay, we know there are five hundred and fifty people living in Good Thunder. If we got fifty-one percent of five hundred and fifty, two hundred and twenty-six or whatever, serves that says that many people. Qualify for the low income, then you'd be eligible for the small cities grant monies that are available. One thing Chelsea did cautious uh caution us on, it might be challenging to use that for a twenty twenty-four project, we're just getting to be up against the gun a little bit with some of the other. Processing that would need to take place, but. Um, we did feel it was probably a good option for Good Thunder if we were interested in. And sending out this survey, it's a very simple survey, it's how many people live in your house? What is your gross income from your house for the dependents you claim or something along those lines?
Yeah, so if you have two people in your home that uh and the rest of your kindness, if you have a five person home, three, you have three dependents and two. Um, people that are um primary caregivers or whatever. Um, those people that potentially earning money, the combined income of those two. Um, represent the income of the whole household. The vendor would need about uh two hundred and eighty-six or something like that, or fifty-one percent of your population.
Yeah.
The, we talked about this in depth, um, Chelsea, Joe and I, and we talked about it in depth, we said, well, okay. There's six hundred thousand dollars of potential financing. Of grant dollars available through the small cities development. Um, it'd take maybe a hundred, two hundred dollars to put a survey together. But then if city staff would mail it out and then. People return those, and I know we help, we help a number of communities do this, but you could save a lot of money by doing that yourself.
And I think we did that many, many years ago, I think so, yeah.
Then um a lot of times communities will go and actually if they don't get responses from people, they'll ask, hey, have you, you know, if they're in. Or um, you know, paying the bill or something, hey, have you filled out this response yet? Um, if they haven't, then. They collect those responses and once you collect them, the goal is to find, I guess, two in one, which one are they? At least half of the town, at least fifty-one percent of the town. Then based on knows, you could analyze to see. What percentage are uh low to moderate income? And, you know, I always I always struggle with that because Good Thunder, we always say your median household income is high, but.
Yeah.
There's a chance that by, you know, the survey, it's artificially inflated or you you can. Have, you know, have a much medium lower household income based on the survey results, so.
So in other words, I can just write down what I get for social security. You on that boat too, Tom, or?
So you'd have to be a. A homeowner, that would go to like the apartments, all the apartments we have in town, or would that include them?
Uh, but it would be the uh, because I know these communities that would do this and they have, um, when they come in and pay their bills. They, yeah, would go to apartments and that sort of.
Yeah, I think we would be citizens, I mean, we would be citizen, then we were. We're providing that utility.
Manufactured homes, you know.
Would this be a non survey?
So, yeah, if we were to do that, then this, all this would be pushed out in twenty-four. Correct? There'd be nothing done this year?
Well, in states actually, um. Applications are being submitted to, I think it was November twenty-ninth this year, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. What's happening is, um, we've seen in the past, states went overwhelmed with uh. Projects and they just don't have enough enough people to to review everything and get something turned around quickly, so. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four project, it's it it could be possible, but realistically, we're thinking it's more like fiscal year twenty twenty-five before. Everybody, all the applications are approved, application reviewed and determined at the city. Fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, excuse me, is January or June of uh. July first of twenty twenty-four.
June thirtieth to twenty twenty-six, or, yeah.
But if we go to the state and tell them we're in the process, that's what they're looking for, what are.
They're in PCA you're talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're looking for the way the MDI and I.
Yeah, that's the goal. Say is you've got to show that you're making some effort and you have been, I mean, you've been.
But if we go with this project, but it's gonna be twenty-five, at least they know that we're in the process of doing it versus just, that would be okay. Hey, you think?
Well, this is. Go ahead, Jeff.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, the financing that's available to this program, I think, is maximum six hundred thousand dollars, which is quite a bit of money, so, I mean, I was just thinking. We can concentrate on that northwest corner of the city. I mean, that was what, sixty-eight percent or no?
Northwest part is fifty-one percent of the city's total excess water and then I think the southwest is like seventeen for sure, or sixty. On the western half of the city.
So when you're talking about that, the the northwest corner, so this part, what we're talking about right now off of Hall- Halliday there. That's included in that that quadrant, right?
Correct, yeah, that is included in that quadrant.
Well, this is all talking about the dirty water. About, can you put this, combine this with clean water? And dwell project, uh filtration project, uh, we've got a thing here from. Where was it from, John, the Department of Health or whatever?
Yeah.
He's talking about replacing four inch mains and that's what's flowing up to Paul and Rhonda's place up Holiday. So would we get this all in one big?
Well, I've always said all along here, for the past four years, we need to get. Our our ideas for this project and just get a one-time thing, you know, one big bid. You know, so that, you know, you get somebody in, they just do everything and. You have the funding and, you know.
Yeah, under this program, though, keep in mind, I know you're all thinking the same way I am, is that this under the. Small cities, that's a six hundred thousand dollars and you can do that, if you're giving expenses, you could apply the following year. The following year after that.
Actually, what you're saying.
Um, okay, well, I guess if you want to really. I mean, if you're talking, that's six hundred thousand, unfortunately, it's not gonna take you very far, I mean, if you're trying to do. Water and sewer reconstruction because, um, you know, we were just talking about that here the other day, if we. Block a reconstruction now, you're almost approaching, believe it or not, four hundred thousand dollars, I think. Which is, you know, just crazy, you kind of shake your head, you know, you can sort of water and the hole works on a block of roadway. Services, you could be approaching four hundred thousand dollars.
Or block.
Or block. So destruction is, destruction cost have really gone up and it used to be only a hundred thousand dollars, but now it's four hundred thousand dollars, so.
Holy cow.
So that doesn't go very far, so I'm, yeah, so I mean. But um, I guess where I'm thinking is, is that, you know, if you're thinking something larger, we think you started to get into grant dollars, is if you could go with a. Um, like group or PFA. Um, and the Clean Water Revolving. That's, if you're gonna do that, then that's where you would have to. There are so many dollars, Chelsea, I'll put it out, but after certain cost, then you start to become grant eligible. You know, for improvement costs, they'll cover, uh, they'll cover X up to X amount of dollars, then after that, everything costs more than. And grant dollars apply and most, that money is, doesn't have to be repaid. Challenge with that program is, and I keep saying it, you're probably sick of me, but I just want to make sure you understand it, is is that. They determine what, um, how much you're eligible for, grant dollars, wants you to have your rates and all your other debt considered. And without any other sanitary or water main debt, your rates would have to go up uh quite a bit compared to what they are now.
Yeah.
And that's, it's kind of a shock to everybody that, you know, who goes through the program, that's what it is, it's just, it's it's really a shock.
I mean, you you think about it, it might be easier or cheaper even, just go ahead and get a three percent loan. And forget about all that. You know what I mean? And rather than raise rates forever, you know, the loans go away, the rates increase.
Stay forever.
They stay forever, but they increase too, you know, every year they go up, 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 you know, so.
So the advantage of that, though, is if you do go through PFA and you do, I mean, let's say you increase your rate, let's just say seventy bucks a month. For water, seventy bucks a month for sanitary sewer, based in that city, you can afford X amount of dollars of uh of improvements. Let's say the improvement costs, you know, are less than that, obviously, then. You don't, I mean, I'm trying to think, you could probably still get a loan through that, low interest loan through them, but you don't become grant eligible.
Right.
See that, so I mean, that's one advantage of going through them is that, um, the interest rates on their loans are typically a little bit better than what you can get on the open market. Um, don't ask me what they are now, but I used to remember they used to be a couple points past the open market, so. That's one advantage to doing two programs.
So in your opinion, if we were to phase this whole thing, I mean, we've talked about it a lot tonight, but. First phase in your opinion would be what, here?
We we want to take care of that sanitary sewer underneath the drainage well coming east off of Halliday and Chabot Street. So we just think that 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 could be the best bang for our buck in terms of I and I elimination.
And then the alley. The other direction here, the eighty thousand dollar. I mean, there's something going on there too.
Yeah, that that's a more, that 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 needs to be replaced, right, because people's sanitary sewers flowing flowing through there and and it's. Completely caved in, um, such that it's stuck in soil around it. That's just uh something that needs to be repaired.
And if we don't get that replaced this this year, then when we have snow melt in the spring, we're, our ionized gonna go up. Cause it's.
I mean, smoke was still, why not, and that thing like.
Yeah. Well, that's my point here, I mean, so we're we're at a two hundred and sixty, whatever odd dollars, thousand dollars. Quarter of a million dollars. And. I mean, if we were to go to bid on something like this, would this still be done this year, do you think, or would it? I mean, if we were to go to bid on something like this, would this still be done this year, do you think, or would it?
Everybody you talk to is so busy, I mean, just for that little bit of that alley, you know, even the guys we use all the time, they just said, we're so busy, we're so busy that.
Thing is, this is a, and this is a quarter of a million, I mean, it's not just fifty, sixty thousand per month, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think it would be, I mean, you, you never know, I guess if you have a warrant for it, um. Lot of us contractor would could start on that right away.
Do the h- hop along.
Yeah, do the alley first, then hop. It could be done, but I don't know if you.
Yeah, I understand.
Completed in the spring.
When they get crammed like that at the end of the year, they may bid it, they'll say, well, we can cram it in, but it's gonna cost it, do they do that, or?
Yeah, we've had experience with that, we've had it other way too, we've had it where we bid stuff and I still can't believe it, but. Bid some sanitary sewer work and it came in much cheaper than we ever anticipated, simply because. You got a contractor out there and they're, hey, I've got my guys here, I don't have anything going on in this part of the time of the year. I'm gonna jump on that, I can do that for you, it's a lot cheaper than. Some of these other guys can.
So, so could you bid it both ways, that, you know, if you get it done? Get it done, and if not, would be, I mean, I think, I think you'd get good numbers for next spring.
Yeah, you could get it as much, basically say, okay, it's um, choose number, we can work, we can work by such and such a date. And but then that's gonna be kind of challenging for that because um, they don't know what the weather's gonna, we don't, we don't know if it's gonna turn cold and have a. Calm in snowstorm or what, but um, you could do it both ways and then make your options open.
I mean, their option. I guess.
There is a, a touch of coordination with Plurith County, just because they have Cassat thirty five or Front Street coming down there, we're gonna connect in the roadway. We've got to get a talk into that or name of them. We have to get a plan put together and that one would be a little bit challenging.
I mean, in November rolls around, most plants are close to shutting down if they have to shut down, so.
Yeah, so maybe it would be a project for next year.
It's great, yeah.
Yeah, are we, are we okay going next year? We, we have to be, I guess.
You'd have to be, and then if something fails, you'd have to dig down, fix it.
Fix it on an emergency basis. I guess I'm kind of thinking that we ought to uh. Have approved to have them uh. Uh, put together plans, specs. And uh, you know, all that, so that we can actually bid for this project.
Would we include this here because Race does have people maybe coming to do? That element. He has somebody on board that thinks they can get here, well, it's a Boring Brothers, I believe. He got a bid from Bonings and uh, W W. And Kyle thought that they could possibly get in here and. Go from the good point down into the street. So I mean, would we just have that paired up and done and not have it all? Just call that a repair?
We, we, we can do that.
Yeah, what, what way would be the best?
Eighty thousand dollars, what's the limit, a hundred grand is that?
Yeah.
And I don't, it'd be less than that.
I would be in favor of that, but I think maybe pull this one out, that alleyway. You know, because I think Race has got.
Regals rolling.
W W block top can finish this year at thirty eight thousand for an emergency finish, then that would be. Rock and let it settle over the winter, pave in twenty four. I think that was more of a question than a statement.
Well, it does say that, yeah.
Uh, if I just can, um.
That's Race.
W W said we could either do rock or you could do a lift of. The black topping would be in two lifts and they could do one lift. This fall, that way we have hard surface in the winter and then um, do the other lift in. The spring or the, whenever they can start again, um, the road would be, they wouldn't do, they'd just do the road all at once, but around that manhole. But if we wanted to do that with the alley, it was like a hundred and fifteen feet or so of the alley that was uh, looking at being. Um, replaced, and then I think maybe a hundred of that was pipe and then. Fifteen of it was just, were the asphalt still bad?
I didn't know you were on there, Race, the Boring Boys, did they say they could maybe do that yet then, or did they not then?
Uh, he's kind of back and forth, uh, it seems like when I, sometimes I talk to him and he, they can get it done this year and. Other times I talk to him when he's looking at next spring and I don't, I mean. For plowing, it'd be a pain to wait till the spring and if we, it's, if it's already collapsing and it collapsed in the winter, it's gonna be a lot more expensive to do it then than it would be. To get it done now.
We need to have it done this fall, that, that alleyway.
Right, I, I agree.
Yep.
I agree too, okay.
Could you live with the alley just being gravel?
I would think, did you leave it gravel, wouldn't you? I mean, you're talking a hundred and fifty feet or whatever, that has a good way to thaw and freeze and thaw during the winter and.
Pretty good grade coming down.
Right. Put their concrete apron back in there, cross the sidewalk and apron probably. And have that part done and call the rest good until next spring.
But I plan to put a manhole at the street there, exactly, because right now it's just a blind T, which is kind of challenging.
I think that'd be the only smart thing to do, which went quite a few years with no manhole, we've been very lucky.
That, that thirty eight thousand is including adding a structure to that tour where that comes out of the alley, yeah.
Okay, so with that being said, then, for these folks here then. We just go ahead and give them the authority to do that? So we can get this in and done and.
With the I and I that we've been talking about?
Well, we gotta start somewhere. We get that alley down on our own and get this project in motion, that'd be the best for everybody.
Yeah, I'd really choose to see. And uh, once I do sure it's put in there, I'm going to see if it has or what kind of. If, but what kind of impact it has on I and I. Cause I, like you, like you almost said, or I've been thinking about that when I told Joe before we even started all this, I said, I would.
I can too.
If we sort of chose to have Empire Pipe come back and do some of this lining. Would we have them come back and address some of this again and see if they think it's feasible? And, and line too also?
I don't know how much.
We don't know what it would cost, we hear it costs a foot.
I guess, I guess if.
You know that.
If they thought, if they thought that could be lined, that maybe could be an engineering thing. Let them decide all that, and now they can, they can design this project and bid this project so that, you know.
You're talking about the.
Well, some of this here, if going down minor street. If we could, you know, God, we got a nice street.
And the pavement is in good condition.
I mean, it's one of the last streets, well, kind of last street's done, it's a shame to, you know, day it up. If we can line it, cause we lined quite a few feet down there on the east edge of town. You know, so.
But it does introduce the opportunity to eliminate the I and I from the services at the front. There is a, a street reconstruction project, the city that, the opportunity to work with property owners and maybe do some of that, some pump inspections. Inspecting for footing tiles that may be connected to the sanitary sewer, the foundation drains coming around the house, connect to this sanitary sewer. That's one thing we're seeing in, in a lot of these surrounding communities, we're finding is a good chunk of I and I is coming from the homes. Rather than maybe a direct connect or another source, we're, we're just. A few communities in the area, with every reconstruction project they do, they require clay mains to be replaced up to the house. Disconnect footing tile for that time, we're having some good success. With doing that with reconstruction projects in terms of lowering I and I, trying to disconnect some of the footing tiles at that time. So that's not an opportunity with lining, but not lining is still a, a, a good thing to prolong the life of the sewer main.
One thing that, I, I didn't mean to interrupt again, but I, I wanted this, this was, I was surprised about this, but you didn't talk at all about um. Some pumps and, I mean, I would, I think you'd be amazed or I don't know. I'm aware of that, but it's pretty interesting, um, the sub pumps from, I think, just that southwest corner of the town. Why don't you mention that real quick, cause. Okay, what kind of? Water can be generated by some pumps, I guess, so.
In it though, just before you get going, as dry as it was before you got this rain event. I mean, my some pump ran last summer a lot. And after this rain event, it ran a very short time and I am down below my basement floor. With a pipe and uh. Even though we got that many inches of rain, can it really? Go down and hit the perimeter tile or the some pump that fast to make our I and I go just like this and then back down?
Yeah, well, one, one thing I'll caution you there and there. It is, we are struggling with that too, why does it jump up so fast? But reviewing those graphs, it doesn't come right back down like this, it jumps right up like this. And then it kind of comes down at a, at an angle like that over the span of a few days. So we're, we're still struggling with why, why does it jump up so fast?
That's right.
Um, but that bleed out period, we, we have kind of changed our mindset. To some, the some pumps or potentially agricultural tile. So we, we're confident we did rule out in the western half of the city is a direct connection. We would have found that with the smoke testing, we, we would have found that, there, there's a map in the report. Showing where, where we set up that smoke machine, I mean, it was seventy percent of the nails in that area. There's not smoke coming out of the catch basin.
When Middle Street was put in up there, you know, in that cul-de-sac. I remember him saying that there was a couple field tile up there. But that Empire Pipe's video should show any connection like that.
Yeah.
But I mean, again, to get that much spike that fast.
Yeah, yeah, we struggled with that one too, because I, you know. We were just like, I just, I still can't believe that, and you can see that kind of, it's starting to, you bring up a good point, because it was fairly dry. Um, you're not gonna see that kind of water.
The ground's gonna take a lot of that.
Right, the only time you see that is the ground saturated, then once it rains, it goes instantaneously to your, to your uh, drain tiles. But um, I guess, one thing put into perspective is that, I think you said there were like a hundred and, or how many homes?
Hundred and sixty homes, the western half of the city.
Okay, a hundred and sixty homes in the western half of the city and this, you had about, uh, how many gallons in the western half, one point five?
Six, yeah, one point six.
Million during this rain event. Um, for a some pump, I mean, every home would have to be pumping. Some pump, which I know every home doesn't have, and I know Robert's is an example, yours doesn't drain to the sanitary sewer, so I think you pump yours out. But if the drain tile, uh, you're connecting to this, uh, drain tile is connected to their sewer service, or if some pump was. Connected to their floor drain as an example, maybe they, they have a some pump and a some basket. And they pump it right to the floor drain rather than pumping it outside over the ground, it, it was. Each one would have to run.
One hour each day.
Each day, um, to generate that volume of water. So that would mean everybody in that district, you know, the hundred and.
Really?
Hundred and sixty.
So just, just one hour for some pump to pump can, just one hour, and that would. That would get the numbers from that.
So the direct math was there, if a some pump pumps a hundred and thirty down, or minute, and a hundred and sixty homes on stop. Every single home, just pretend every.
Everyone, yeah.
Single one would have to pump for one hour each day over that five day span, that would generate one point six million gallons of water.
Holy smokes. You know, if you go up there, well, on the end of Main Street, my dad's house was built in seventy six. I think the one to the east of it was built in the early seventies, you know, they didn't backfill with P rock then. They pushed the clay right up against the basements. Where if you had P rock there and you got a pouring drain, all that would get a perimeter tile a lot faster. And working its way down through the clay, so I think a lot of them houses up there are built have played right back up to the cement foundation. So I mean, it's just a perimeter tile, just is not gonna get it that fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question, yeah, I used, I struggled with that too, it's definitely sticks out, just. It's just like, I was thinking initially that, well, there, I can't believe you. Find anything that's, um, you know, hey, there's a catch basin or something here.
Yeah, well, it's just like Tom's neighbor, years ago, Fritz. There, there'd be pounding in between him and Tom and he said, don't worry about it, there's a pipe in there, it'll go away in a couple days. We never found out where it went, but it went away. And we might eliminate it when the new sewer line went up there. We could have maybe. You know. Connection that we didn't know about, when the new pipe went through there.
Yeah, we made sure all the field tiles on very western edge of the city, um, weren't connected to that pipe, so.
Well. Your question was about lining Empire or somebody. So that's, that would be like a second project or, or an addition to the hundred and eighty thousand dollar project.
Yes, there is no cost estimate prepared for that at this time.
Oh, right. Which maybe is fine, because maybe then they can. Search that out with Empire, whoever.
Yeah, if you try to line those, um, after talking down, um, that line that, um, up through the drainage well.
Up here on that side.
Recommend lining that.
No, no. That needs to be new.
Uh, that's what I mean, that'd be, it's actually like two separate. Projects here, you know, that we could put them to work on and then we can maybe get that all done this year. Or yeah, next, next year, the next year, but I mean, we just, at least get it all done. And then the alley over here, that'll be done, we'll get that done. How it makes sense? I mean, that's what I think we should do anyway, what do you guys think? I mean, should we just? I, I, I think it's fine to move forward, cause that, we don't know, I know it's gonna do to us in a couple of years if we don't have. Cause if that's, if this doesn't fix the problem, I mean, we can still say we're looking for what's causing, but. You know, how long is the environmental side gonna be willing to overlook or allow, you know, exceptions?
Well, if we line pipe and we replace by pollution control, can see we are making attempts to eliminate Diana.
And it's all based on fact, I mean, we're not just, you know, we're not just throwing pipe in the ground either here now, you know, I mean, we're, it's all based on true fact.
Well, yeah, that's why they put their flows in there and we got data.
Expect, we do these two that we're talking about, well, plus that little deal down here.
That, that, that should help some though too.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that's gonna help some, it's going to help. I mean, and so, I mean, I really think that's gonna cure a lot of our problem here, you know, half of it at least.
Right, Jeff, no, and we're, we are very eager to see replacing that underneath that drainage well, I mean, that could. Hopefully, that's just a, a large improvement.
I mean, over the last, what, slide the seven, eight years, we have went from the highway sixty six to the lagoon. And what, two years ago, we went from sixty six up into the northwest. Northeast corner of town, then we lined that whole easterly pipe, plus we lined other ones and we replaced.
This, this one. This one here is all replaced.
Yep, so I mean, we've been making a lot of attempts to curb our I and I and it just keeps biting us.
Yeah.
One nice thing about these projects is it doesn't involve digging up streets.
Right.
These two.
Yeah.
Yeah, these two.
There's the easiest fix.
Yeah, yeah.
That, down there might be ninety nine percent of the problem.
I think they're all state activists, they, you know, um, I think the some pump inspection to me is also important because. That's something regardless, you wanna, you wanna have those some pumps disconnected no, no matter what, it's just not good practice to have. Some pumps, and even if you, somebody. Sell a home or what, but somehow do some inspection, there's video cameras out there, you know, we're talking. To some, some cities, these cameras now, uh, you could get a sewer camera for, I think, what, five thousand dollars?
Five thousand or something.
I mean, you can extend that down to sanitary sewer service and see what's going on and see even locatable above, above ground. I mean, with services with another attachment, I guess, it costs more than five grand, but. I don't know, that, I mean, to me, was, was raised, and that's, it might be a little tough with just, you know, one person, but it's, it's some. And that's, it might be a little tough with just, you know, one person, but it's it's something that. You know, you may be able to pick off one or two here or there, just to start keeping a record of.
Yeah.
Of, you know, what you find, because right now, there's a lot of discussion out there. There's been a number of people over the years that have tried different things and maybe. A few homes were inspected, a few weren't, and we, as a city, I don't know if you have a real good record or anything, but it'd be good to keep. And uh, people keep it one spot and say, okay, this home here, they have everybody in town, the address, the home here we've inspected. We have an inspector or. Have a document so you can start documenting these things, so you can show the M P C O two that you are me, you. You are being active as a city, which, which, I mean, you're trying, you're trying. It's not like you're sitting around.
Well, that five thousand, even if it was a seventy five hundred or a ten thousand, they they charged us five hundred dollars to video that other way. Well, you know. No, so I mean, you know, if, if like you say racer, we had extra part-time help. And they could go in and do that, and you spent ten thousand dollars for that equipment. It could save money along, in the long run for the town.
And there's a, I think that was a hundred so feet. I know the bigger challenge, sometimes uh.
Getting through the.
Well, the cords might not have a ton of resistance, you'll push through, you kind of reach a point where all of a sudden they can't, you can't push. As well, whereas like Empire comes in, they got the remote control vehicle that's driving the cord instead of the manual pushing. Um, so I I've seen it make it, I've seen it make it a hundred feet.
Yeah, because real water, they can disconnect your water coming into your house and they can go out a hundred and fifty or two hundred feet. In your serve water service.
Yeah, water service.
Yep, in the service, it's real small. You can go right down through there because they were trying to locate a line up over here.
There's not, there's not much opportunity for that.
Yeah.
Bigger pipe and that cord and have to be fairly stiff in order to get it in the pipe, but it, you know. Barely ends, not as stiff because you have to get it down through the, you know, floor and all that, but you want some. You can only get so far, it's a little bit heavier, but I can see with the smaller pipe, yeah, and a smaller camera, you'd be able to push that a long ways.
Mm-hmm.
It's almost rigid, so. But yeah, no, I.
Well, with this project, like you're saying, Tom, we should move forward.
Yep.
And then do we want these guys to move on? Um, clean water. Um.
Yep.
Replacing that, that main down there, our filtration plant. I come up with an idea, Jeff, you know, where we put the new fire hydrant down here by the gas stations on the west side. We ran a new six inch main, I'm sure, all the way down to that hydrant. On the west side of the gas station, sitting in the, in the street or in the sidewalk area. And to service. Um. To service, here's where we're potentially put our well yet. We have that fire hydrant right here. Would we ever just run that straight right up all the way here? Because this is four inch across here, and this is that four all the way. But would you ever continue that on, hook that four on and just loop that and just keep that going? And you wouldn't only have to dig up about a hundred and fifty feet of blacktop street that way, you know?
There's a vein, here's a.
Because if you don't take and come up that alleyway, a block up here, that's four inch going down that alleyway. You're not going to gain nothing with your new main, so you'd have to start way back here. So could you just go from the potential area of the new well? And continue south all the way down Holiday because. I think the guy across from Eileen's house, Tom, probably has a separate water line, because there's no main there.
Could be.
Where Hanson used to live.
Yeah.
And like Rogers. Well, you guys would have that information if he got hooked on to the. I I just don't know where that guy's got his line.
I mean, Luki and Darren used to live there.
Yeah, but but the house right across the street from Eileen's there.
On the north side?
Nope, on the east side.
Yep. We didn't, we didn't find our water.
So I think he's got a private line running way up there for a block to get to that water main.
Oh.
So if you ran from that hydrant by the gas station on the west side. Straight up that street, it was kept right on going, we got. Good supply down to that area already.
Yeah, it's an option, I guess, a possibility. I, like I said, I, I did. Put a model together, the city's water distribution system many years ago, and I think they even have it. Said, don't lose this. This is kind of what I would recommend is water main improvements to help your distribution system out with fire flow. Uh, pressure and the whole works, I, I don't know if I ever took a look at that segment of it, but um I know. I know there are some looping issues there, and especially with a four inch main, long dead four inch main, dead end four inch mains is is. It's been bad, bad. I can't believe you can even get water out of that, but I mean. That's, I'm not surprised that you get very little water out of that hydrant because long, four inch mains and over time. Um, the pipe starts to become encrusted. Um, it'll roll up on the inside.
Roll and shut.
So I mean, I've seen where I've heard doors mancado many, many years ago, they were. Um. All the pipe on the ground, and I remember that, we're fighting the hole up, that was in the center, that pipe was only a inch or two. Uh, in diameter, so you're going, oh, my goodness.
Still put up with very low, low water pressure and other ones while we were doing the tower. You know, because that's that four inch main that's going up that holiday street.
Yeah.
So around the back there, they were in.
You're always that four inch made only equal, but.
That's right, we could only maybe have a two inch or an inch and a half by now.
Yeah, so anytime you can look and see them looping doesn't take care of that problem at all, but it still wouldn't, it would be much more water.
Yeah.
Throughout that four inch, I guess.
Right.
Could only get that restriction, get the constraints a lot, but.
Right.
And so, I mean, the idea is, if you met friend that a while back, it's four, six inch diameter main up there and loop it in whenever you can.
So would there to be two different ways of funding this if you did clean water, dirty water? Or do you put clean water and dirty water together and fund it all at once?
You can do it a number of different ways. It all depends on what, how, how far do you want to go with it and how, what kind of improvements do you want to make? Um, and that would be ultimately, I think, best that the city can make now is just determine, well. What we, how much do we want to do? I mean, it's right now, I can say. Process, we have a variety of different things and, I mean, you could, you could reconstruct your whole city. Uh, you know, put new sewer and water and the whole works in and reach so many millions of dollars. At the end, as a city, you'd still have to raise rates.
Yeah.
Um, and um, you know, before you even become eligible, but you still have to raise rates to pay what you can afford the city, so. And so you can, you can do whatever you want. It's just, how do you want to pay for it?
That's right, yeah, but I think we owed to the residents on South Holiday to provide them adequate water. Because during that water, oh, here's another question, during that time of painting that tower, you know, the the water supply is very limited. If we would put a well on that designated area. You know, we, we surveyed it, I think it fits there, right? If we did it in the southwestern corner of that lot.
Yeah, we actually did.
To report anyway that they gave us.
Yeah, um, would, could we put a water silo also on that lot to help out during them times when we have uh the water towers? Uh, being worked on, would that help?
Yeah, expensive, yeah, I think really do with you, I mean, you probably already do that. Pressure, uh. You do things that are not producing, but uh. Pressure valve.
Yeah.
Using valves on the hydrants and keep your pump running while the tower's down.
Right.
But right now, I think from your standpoint, your current well, I'm not sure, I can't remember how many gallons per minute it pumps, I know you have thirty, thirty gallons.
Oh, the one little one is down to, it's. Sixty-five, seventy, maybe, maybe eighty, and the other one is what, two hundred and eighty or three hundred and twenty? Something like that.
So that's, you got that kind of flow, that's, let's do it and um, hope like there's no fire, hopefully no fire when it's been at the tower because. You have to be dead. All that running. Or basically, I'm trying, clogging it to pressure out your system so that your tower's out of service, everybody else has pressure. Might not be the greatest because um, the whole system is pressurized by that, but. Yeah, I mean, but for a standpipe or a tower on that lot for that purpose is probably not.
Feasible.
I mean, instead I can, or feasible on a cost standpoint, it's going to be much more expensive than. Really you think you're going to gain, you're not going to gain a lot from it.
Okay.
I mean, you're not, you gotta, you don't have a huge system here. We have an upper or lower system. Tower is offline for um maintenance. You have to have provisions in place to keep water up and running, and either you have a well or another well to do that.
And I think the little, the little well right now, didn't they say there's getting to be a hole that's pumping some sand? So I mean, it's not very big to start with. How long do you keep putting money into that well?
Yeah.
Well, I think.
One that does two hundred, three hundred gallons.
Oh, I think the big one does a little more than that. It's right on that board over there and I can't remember, I thought it was like. Three twenty or something, a minute?
But that's only one though, right?
That's a twit, yeah.
So from the standpoint of the city, I mean, um, it's good to have a minimum of at least two wells.
Yeah. Good wells.
Right, see, that's, I was gonna, gonna bring that up, you know, I got that written down here as that part of what we're talking about, we, we want to get a well.
Yep.
In that lot.
And that house was sitting on there. Yeah, it was sitting right there where they located, we can have a well. But now the house is gone, so we can move forward on this too. Yep.
Grace is asking if we can put an isolation valve for the tower?
Um, well, there is. One outside there under the grass, I believe. Um. We found that a few, a few years ago, I thought. Have to ask Ron.
Hey.
Ron or Noah, probably.
Well, in my opinion, the, the whole well thing, that's something we should move on to. I don't think that's a big thing. I don't think that's a big, huge expense.
Yeah, we. We had a.
Hundred thousand?
Nah.
Do you have to take and put a well in that area, Jeff, and then plummet back to our filtration plant? Yep, so we have to another, run another pipe up that street.
Yeah, you have to.
Or that alleyway. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yes, you'd have to do that, but I, I mean, I think, so, uh, we were thinking, you know. Everybody has in the back of their mind these wells, these rule wells, you could probably get them dug. For, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, thirty thousand, fifty thousand, whatever, something less than a hundred thousand dollars, but. Um, I know we've done a number of well projects and they're not, unfortunately, they're not. A hundred thousand dollar wells. I mean, these, they could, they could approach.
Yeah, three to four hundred thousand, and that, that would include some uh raw water main piping back to the treatment plant.
Okay, yeah.
Half a block down the alley there.
Just because I'm assuming most of that's because of the, the amount of water we need, like if we were. A single family farm out in the country, we'd probably don't have to go down as far as.
That's part of it, John, and part of it's the electrical and and that raw water line piping.
I think the time we ran that water main down, so you put that hydrant there, I think it was sixty five thousand dollars a boning boys did it. They started right out there in the street, ran down there and put a new hydrant in, I think it was sixty five thousand bucks, you know?
Yeah.
So just saying, if that went up to a hundred thousand dollars, what is the actual cost of sinking a three hundred foot well?
Well, that's, like I said, it's, you know. Bad, how far, how deep you have to go.
Yeah.
Files and all that, but we're just saying, I don't think you can do it for a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be more than that.
Yeah.
It's going to be.
Three hundred thousand.
Triple that, you know, it's going to be easily that, so that's, I don't. Another community, similar size could done the same thing, um, about the same thing. But then, you put a well on it, it's not, doesn't come into that amount, it's not a hundred thousand dollars, it's. Three, four hundred thousand dollars and even more sometimes, depending what you want to do.
When you were saying four hundred thousand dollars per block, was that water and sewer?
Water sewer, storm sewer, gravel based.
Oh, okay, alright, alright.
Yeah.
Cause I just adding up going from this street south, there will be one point six million dollars on them, four blocks, one. Two, three, four, yeah, about four blocks.
And if it's a little narrow or street and.
Yeah, it's a very narrow street.
Yeah, I mean, there's, that's a very, very rough, rough number there, Robert, for, although you can see it being.
So I mean, our filtration, our, our trays in there, I wish Brian would have been here tonight. We are running on borrowed time. What kind of timeframe does it take or do we have to have this all lumped into the same thing? You know, the, the, the well, the bringing it back to the pump house, the water main. Do we have to have it all in one or can we segregate getting the?
I don't think we do.
No, okay.
Depends if you want to use uh P F A financing, you know, for like water treatment. That financing is available out there for, you know, even uh water feeding plants, if you wanted to. Upgrade or even consider the site that you're doing, that's one option for you too, is to consider maybe your treatment plant. I think we talked about this many, many times with some, for some of these other council members, John and um Scott, we're on the council, we talked about it, but. You know, like, uh, the cost for uh a new water treatment facility versus. Improving your existing facility, which is really outdated and old, um, it's. You know, it costs quite a bit more, but in the end, you might be better off for the long term, so because. You're spending the money now, but it's going to be, it's not going to be an issue every five years, every couple of years for the next twenty years. But we are thinking at the same time, it's, well, maybe consider this site that you're at, can you build a?
Yeah.
Water treatment.
So that was the next question.
Cause we did, yeah, and we could pump it right into the.
Water main.
Route that, raw water main back, right? Instead, you'd have to, uh, I mean, you can do that, we talked, we're learning about that, the thing is, is you had. Um, there's some setback requirements, so like for instance, a bathroom, if you had a bathroom in that facility, you'd have to make sure the piping. Uh, restroom was at least fifty feet away from the well, so not to say you couldn't have a building sitting there, you just can't add that bathroom. In the corner closest to the well.
Gotcha. Would you ever, would you ever build a treatment plant just to handle what comes out of just that well? So you could put it in the uh water main right away and not bring it back to this treatment plant?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
And you'd want to bring this well down to that treatment plant.
So you'd only want to have one treatment plant in city of Good Thunder?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
You could, you could do it, get by, but I don't know what that. Okay, you're doing, spending multiple duplicate.
Yeah.
Costs.
But by the time you take and run that water main back up here, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars, you know, from the well back up here, if it costs that much. You know, a mini water treatment plant, you know, just to service that thing. That, that wellhead.
We're gonna have to run that line up here anyway to get it to the water tower.
Yeah, that's what I mean, bringing it back here, yeah.
But if you put a, a, a water treatment plant on that property with the new well, you would not have to run it back.
Well, no, right, you could put it right in the main and the way you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it would equalize the.
Beat it all back.
Yeah, it would equal, the pumps would equalize the tower and you wouldn't have to run it back.
Yeah. There's a lot of options.
Yeah, I'm starting, my head's starting to spin a little.
Well.
Yeah, we've covered a lot of ground.
So.
We want, we want them to come up with engineer the. I and I part, right?
Yeah, I, I, I would say that we want them to prepare the. The, the bid and specs and all, all the engine, everything that's needed to get that project done.
Yep.
So it can be bid, you know? And uh.
For next year.
Yeah.
It's possible.
For next year, if possible. And then if there's funding available and all that kind of stuff, you can bring all that to us, you know, I mean, we can get all that in, in there. If not, we'll get that on the next, the next phase.
Um. Then do we also want them to start looking at? That property to come up with some plans to them?
I think it's very important that we move on that, some of all, because I'm afraid that one of these days, we're just going to be up a creek.
Yep, we are, huh?
And just. You know, and, and, and then we're going to know for sure, because you know what, we sit here and we always talk about, and, and you folks too, you know, you always mentioned that. You know, seventy dollars a month is what we're going to have to raise the waters, rates to, all these things. If we go through this. Process for this project or the, the well, what we're talking about, the new well project. We're going to know for sure.
One thing, it's been a good lifetime, because one thing to keep in mind is that, that we keep saying that seventy dollars per month, that's, that. That's how much you would have to raise, raise before you become grantable. So I mean, let's say, I wanted to do a well project, and well, well project is only three hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars, we're saying. Four hundred thousand dollars, if you wanted to use PFA financing for that, well, you only have to raise your rates enough to, to pay for that.
That's right, that's, that's, that's what we always struggle with.
Seventy dollars a month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then again, if you wanna do water treatment, you did one in St. Clair many years ago, I don't know, ten years ago now, at least, and. I remember that one, did a well on a water treatment facility over there, and that was, at the time, very nice facility. Uh, was seven hundred, some odd thousand dollars for the water treatment facility.
Yeah.
Well, was, I can't remember how much it was, but, I mean, it's, it's still gonna cost some money to be water treated, definitely. But I would, if you could do that, I would definitely consider that, that's right, for your water treatment, that would be, that would run out of time here.
Well, it's, yeah, and then why don't we have them do that, you know? At least we're mole, then we can decide, then we got real numbers to look at, I mean, I know they're. They're not bid numbers, but I mean, you know, I mean, they're your estimate numbers and that, but they're reels we got to look at. And we can decide what we can do, what we can't do.
Well, we've. Both of, this sewer project is a need, and this water treatment, another well is a need.
Yeah.
It needs to be done, we have, we've talked about it for fifteen years.
Yep.
And we does, nothing happens, so we need to instruct these guys to make it happen.
Yeah, that's my point, that's exactly my point.
All the filtration systems talked almost thirty years ago already.
So I mean, we need you guys to get us some numbers to make this happen, we need a new well. Because I, our secondary well could go tonight.
I, yeah, we're, I, we're on borrowed time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, that was the whole reason for moving on that.
Our trays are on borrowed time for aerating the water. Cause I've looked in there multiple times and they just keep getting up. Little crooketer. I mean, they just gotta be done, so I mean, that there hopefully could be a project done this winter. New aeration in our treatment plant, or whenever it can get done.
Or, but I mean, if it, if it works out, that it'd be a better project to put that whole thing new on the other property.
That's right.
And this, we just abandoned this, you know?
So I think we should, I would do, unless I'm hearing wrong, because I, my standpoint, I think it's, if you can afford it, and the city are comfortable affording it. If you can go down well on that, the lot, that real park and valley, and. Like, to me, I think it'd be good for the city to get a cost, as no matter what it would take to get a water treatment facility there, at that lot.
Right.
Then what it would take to basically demo your other one and make that connection, or, you know, do whatever you need. Um, then, then we talk with our financing people, and then they can. Financing or else, other people that are financiers out there, they can estimate what kind of cost. City would have, what kind of rates you would have to have in order to make those improvements, then. If you're comfortable with raising the rates at amount, then go ahead, you know, you can go ahead and, and get her designed, get her built. And then you'd have to start, um, you know, inching those rates up to cover that cost.
Right.
Yes, if, if that's what I, I think you're saying.
That's what I think I'm saying too, yeah.
Well, when you go over here, you know, with the chlorine in there, atmosphere in there, you know, from injecting it. And the aerating in the water and all that, what is it, metals that you aerate out? The electrical is gonna have to have. A lot of attention someday.
Yeah.
The same fuse boxes are in the, the dead man's, which are the same ones that that building came in.
Yeah.
See, now they don't even allow that any longer, I mean, you have to have a chemical boom to separate.
Oh, really? Yeah, yeah.
Whole separate boom, and it's gonna be totally. Gotta be, get it on this, regular system.
Okay, and then, then like the chlorine, when we talked about this a few years ago, weren't you talking about adding a little room because that? That product has to be in a, a different room than sitting where it is right now.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's chemicals, it gotta have its own room.
That's right.
They exhaust the fumes.
Exactly, yeah.
So, you know, I guess.
Let's move ahead and do that then.
You know, bid it both ways.
Yeah.
Move in the treatment plant.
Yeah, cause then we got numbers we can decide on, we can, we can, we maybe we'll just look at that and go, you know what, we're gonna get a new well. Or we're gonna revamp these trays.
That's right, yeah.
You know?
We're gonna spend some ten, fifteen thousand dollars on electrical, we're gonna update it.
Right, we'll put a hundred grand in here rather than three hundred down there, you know what I mean? We look at it.
If you, you wanna cost to try to revamp all this, cause I know we did that many years ago, and like you say, I think it's.
Well, we need aeration.
Yeah.
We need pressurized aeration on top of our sand filter, you would still, you can use the sand filter yet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just need to aerate the water up on top of it, right?
Is this a pressure system?
No, it just runs over trays. Yep. And then that fan blows on and blows, aerates the water. I mean, that's very outdated, I'm sure.
Yeah, see, that's the other thing you'd have to determine is just what, what the quality of your current drinking water, I mean, if you have irradium or not, then that.
I think we have a report in here about our drinking water.
Yeah, that came back that our drinking water is really top notch. I don't know about source water.
We can give you that information, it'd be very helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
But, yeah, we can.
Drinking water here, if you guys wanna, can make anything out of that, testing. There's two of them. Yeah, there's two of them, yeah, I didn't find, yeah, here's the other one, Jeff.
Okay, I can have.
You can just have, yeah.
We can then, um, put the cost, so we can gather all that, and see what kind of effect, um, see what kind of effect it'll have on rates, I guess. And, um, we put back down that portion of it, and also.
So we need a motion to move that. Then you wanna make. Um, are we gonna have it, can we have it all, one, where we wanna, one specifically for the sewer and one for the water?
I'd like to see two separate.
Two of them, I would think that.
Yeah, it's a kinda way apart.
Yeah.
You know, yeah. I'm making a motion that we move ahead with that, with those two, have them develop the. And actually though, for the one, for the sewer one, it'd be bids since, to bid from. Okay, yeah.
Tom made that motion, someone second?
I'll second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, I oppose, motion carried, okay, now on the freshwater?
So, yeah, that was it, that's both of them.
Oh, you did, oh, okay.
It's two separate projects, yeah.
Alright, alright.
And we'll take here the one by down the alley.
Yeah.
That's nothing to do with them, right? Okay.
Information.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, that's a lot to eat up in a night.
But we're just getting started.
Well, to be a hundred percent accurate, we've been saving money for fifteen years for this.
Yes.
You know what I mean? Trying to save money.
Yeah. And you're the one that found that our water rates were insufficient there, what, three years ago there, and uh, have you checked them lately, are we making money?
I haven't really looked at them real close. I think somebody else looked at them, and they were, yeah, Burke or somebody looked at them, I think.
Yeah, I don't know. Alright, well, thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you very much.
Oh, and then, uh, with that, that survey thing, we should get that initiated right away, right, and do it in-house and send that surveys out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, send us what we need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get it going.
Do you have a, yeah, do you have a template?
Well, we can do, we can click that, one day survey together, Chelsea can do that, yeah, real quickly, and then send some instructions over. I got a chance to meet, yeah, Sue, Sue, okay, nice to meet you, I'm Jeff, um, can you send some instructions over? And basically send those out.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Before you guys get away, one more thing. A while ago, we were talking, Brian's been talking to us about the, uh, um, what's the contaminant in our? High phosphorus, and uh, we feel, he feels anyway, that the reason is because of the, of the blocker. And he said that we're probably gonna have to have them set some sort of a pre-treatment. Some, somehow, pre-treat their sewer water before it hits our system. And. I asked him at that time to ask you, you or ask the state or whatever, if there's an. A letter that can be found. To send them, to get them on, get them going on this.
Are you sure, is there any testing in none of their wastewater there, and have they?
Oh, he did say, when they did, it flows, that it showed in the.
There was red water.
Yeah, blood, and blood is very high in phosphorus, right?
Yeah, okay, sure. But there probably hasn't been maybe an official sample taken from their wastewater discharge, but there was red water in the sanitary swimming.
You know, uh, I don't know. We don't wanna, we don't wanna like. Roll the alarm bells and all these kinds of things, but at the same time, somewhere along the line, they're gonna have to be brought on board. And they have this, you know, explain to them, and we, we don't have the ability to do that, you know what I mean? And even if it's something as simple as, you know, hey, we're, we're, we're not wanting to do this, but. You know, the state is forcing us to do this, first step is that we're gonna have to come and get some samples. From your the nearest manhole to your whatever, and we'll share that, you know, I mean, you guys know, you've been through it probably, you know, but.
Yeah, you're just kinda like, there's a guidance on that and stuff, friends, what needs to be done? Um, what options are out there for them, if they do have high phosphorus, and then based on those options, what kind of reduction of phosphorus loading would you? What they receive, um. So, yeah, we've, we've done that before multiple times.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, I think we need to move on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we're gonna get in trouble over that too, so we might as well.
Let's fall out of the, I, I.
That's what's, yeah, you know. And I know, we, and I think, I think individually, we've talked to them in the past, but we've never really officially. Done anything, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I think it's time that we actually officially, you know, they get a, they get a letter from our engineering for explaining the whole thing, you know, and, so. That'd be okay.
We're discussing.
Okay, you better get going, yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Alrighty, uh, both the mayor, excuse me, approval of the minutes, and August. Special meeting, addition correction, a little minute. If not, somebody make a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second, second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ballot motion carried, approval of the bills, questions on the bills, anybody? If not, somebody make a motion to approve them. I'm, I, I moved to approves, come in a second. All in favor, say aye, I have both, motion carried. Sheriff's report, we already had, well, we had eighty-six hours assist disturbance, multiple ambulance assist, civil and theft. We got to meet Sheriff Jeff Worsell tonight, good deal, got that done too, uh, fire department. Nobody here representing them, uh, seven calls, by medical, one mutual aid, and assistance, Mapleton, MVA, one. MVA. Motor vehicle accident, I take it?
Oh, yeah.
Alright. Uh, street update, Race, we talked about the alley and uh, up by the post office. Race, you there yet?
He's putting alley down right now, so he can't.
Okay.
He just messaged me and said he's putting alley down, so he can't back at this point.
So that's, up by his main street, or uh, post office, is that to overlay that and wonder?
We're gonna resurface, work on the gate valve by the school, tentative end of, you know, September.
Oak Street, tentative, oh, the middle, yeah, here it is right here.
Manhole or something there?
Yeah, that was the resurface, and then there's the manhole that needs to be repl- um.
We have fixed up, yeah. Yep. And that's work we're trying to all get done yet this fall, right?
Right, yeah, and I believe, sounds like that might be this week or next week, right?
Um.
One of them was coming up.
Bonin should be here the midweek for both the Hope Manhole and Timber Valley Waterway. The Timber Valley Park Waterway.
Oh, the, yeah, well, I mean, if they didn't get that done, this Thunder Valley.
Yeah, they're gonna do that and the Hope Manhole, midweek, they should be here.
Okay.
Sounded like.
Oh.
And they're doing the gate valve this week, aren't they, or is that next, this Thursday, they're doing that?
Fourteenth, they did, they did one down by the school already, right?
Yeah, but there, this is the other one, the other gate valve. That they had to come back and do, they even noticed that was put up last week.
Okay, that's for the hydrant repair.
The hydrant, okay.
I think that's a.
And that's, okay.
All that's been approved, Rich.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, right, yeah.
Yes, yeah, he's just updating on everything he's done, yeah.
Good.
Alrighty, um.
Compost pile, some.
Yeah.
The compost, he wanted to move the blocks to make it one big, because of the fall leaves, to make it one big area versus the three individual. He said it's just too hard to try to clean it up in there, when you're trying to get, yeah, so he was just wanting to, um. To move those for the fall cleanup.
You can do whatever he needs in there.
That's right, he's done a good job of cleaning up that burn pile, he's got the debris sorted out. Got rock, so it's not a mud hole, he's, and Kellen, you've been helping down there, so, yeah, I think. Yeah, he can do whatever he wants with them blocked, he wants to stack them on the back so they don't overflow or whatever.
By making two compartments, he can open one for them to dump it debris and stuff there, and then he can close that one off. And meanwhile, they can use the other bunker, by having the two compartment, and then he can agitate that old one that's full. And have enough time to hopefully, after agitating, getting it to break down and stuff a little bit, um. Look at the possibility, maybe getting a, a roll-off dumpster or something like that, the little old leaves into, pack them into a roll-off, and get them hauled out. Instead of having to load it in the, the dump truck and all move to Mapleton or whatever, whatever it takes to be.
Alright.
He did mention to me too about. Burn pile there, there's a lot of debris, debris.
Yeah, it's in that dirty pile.
He was saying that it costs to haul it.
Yeah, he wanted to get a, uh, a bucket that's rated. So you scoop in and let the dirt out, keep the wood and the debris, uh, if there's chunks of cement that, you know, got in there.
Like a brush fork, with a grapple simply.
Very correct. The cost to keep hauling.
Well, just to give you a, on that same thing about getting the bobcats, skid loader, to get that type of attachment on the front of it with a grapple. Not only can we sift through the ash pile they have, so get all that other chunk debris out of there, cause they won't take it with that in there.
Mm-hmm.
Then the other thing is, is we also spent last week trimming all the trees along the west side of the ponds that go north and south. Got them all cut way back up again, and then right between the two ponds on the north line that goes east and west. We started there and came all the way back to the west, and all of that's gotta be picked up, we got it blocked up and stuff now. But all of that has to get picked up and hauled, but so rather than hauling it, Race goes, why don't we just take a section or two of fence out? On that north line, pull a post and just take all, take that skid loader with that, uh, brush. Fork on it with the grapple, and slide all that stuff right into the woods right there, it'll make good, uh, cover for the habitat for deer and. Whatnot, we'll just push it just on the other side of the fence, don't have to handle it hardly at all.
I wonder is that our land, huh, very far on the other side of the fence?
He's gonna, Race was gonna look at that, see where the boundaries were at, exactly on that.
Yeah, because we wanna make sure without that.
Yep, yep, but we'd only go back in, you know, we're talking about, we're probably only have to go in like twenty, thirty feet at the very most, beyond the fence line. Cause there's enough area there that we can pretty much push all of that brush and everything in.
Yeah.
The easiest and most cost effective to handle that.
And it'll be turn natural decay and.
Yep, and, and, and.
Compensate for you.
For, for animals, for the grouse, the birds, and turkeys, and here. As opposed to hauling it to, and even burning it.
Yeah, if you just go to the burn pile, burning.
Back to increasing more debris down there.
Well, we can see what he gets done over the next thirty days or whatever, and he can talk to us, um. Anything else, what you guys were doing then?
Oh, no, not really, um, did a bunch of, uh, mowed again, and then we trimmed, um. No, not really, um, did a bunch of, uh, mowed again and then we trimmed, um. We found some vandalism down at Thunder Valley Park, you know. Uh, Race just mentioned today that someone wrote graffiti on one of the plastic slides. And then also someone had taken, um. Root beer. Bought glass bottles and busted one on the north side of the warming house and then they did the same thing on the south side of the warming house. When I was down there picking up and trimming, I picked up as much as that as I could possibly get my hands on to, to get rid of that, so. Other than that, just there's more activity down there again.
Did he check the cameras to see the little copper could have been?
All right, did we get the top of the lagoon rocked? Or did we get the top of the lagoon rocked?
No, but he talked to, uh. Tom Walters, he's gonna be doing, yeah. All right, uh, repair county sidewalk, large stump grinding, that would be this one right out here. I asked him, you know, there's a very big trip hazard there.
Yeah.
On that one sidewalk there and, uh.
I'm trying to figure out what he's saying here, was determined that the city would be responsible for taking action. How were due the city count, county maintenance agreement and it cost over. One thousand slash lane mile a sip between city and county, so.
So he's saying if we can come up with more than a thousand dollars at the county will help pay for anything that's on.
Ah, gotcha, oh, so if we can buy them?
Doing one, let's see if we can, maybe they need to take a trip on the county roads to see what needs to be done.
That makes sense.
And then the more we can get together.
And then there's a trip hazard right out here where this big old oak tree is, so is the city supposed to make it upon themselves to get that root taken out? Fix the curb and gutter there again and the sidewalk, cause that.
Well, I think that's what we read it, I think that's why.
That's part of the, um, county, isn't this?
Yeah, try to, try to live.
So that would be a fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Anything over a thousand. That's my understanding.
Well, we should. Get that. Done.
Yep.
I think, I, whether we wait for. A hundred bucks out of the county or not, I mean.
Well, the thing of it is down there in front of the body shop where the head fix that manhole, we gotta get that replaced before winter, that's the man. So that's why I've been trying to find a few other jobs to get done.
Put them all together.
Put them all together, so, and he does have an individual that can come and do some cementing, so let's just give him, okay to get her done.
I agree.
Okay.
Needed a motion for that or can he just?
Well, let's make a motion, what he's got right there. That affect or maybe. Everything that he's got on here first. Uh, we, we needed the sidewalk and the stump grinding a motion that way.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that's.
Somebody wanna make a motion then for the repair sidewalks, large stump grinding? Multiple sidewalks we should put and driveway approach.
I'll make that motion.
Come in a second.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor say aye, I oppose, motion carried. Tree trimming. Yeah, there is a lot of low branches hanging around again. Are you up to doing some trimming with them on some areas of town?
We did, yeah, round town, we can do it too, but while I'm here.
Yeah. Well, let's see what you guys can get done over the next thirty, forty-five days then, but that. Acceptable, everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Need to worry about hours or anything with that? Do we, I mean, I, I don't know, do we need to set in?
There is, there is a, there is a.
Because it's a temporary seasonal?
What's the, um. Retirement plan?
Para.
Para, there is, there is a, a rule in para, you can only work so many hours and you gotta be in it then. And.
Yeah, but I.
That's right, cause you're a Minnesota para retiree.
But I'm already drawn on the city. A para account.
And I, I don't know how that would affect.
I can't. I can't. Pay into another para. With the city, cause I'm already, I already have an account with you guys and I'm already drawn on that account. So.
So you'll be exempt from it or what?
Be exempt, yep.
You think for, for sure or?
I'll check into that, I just wanna make sure that we're not overstepping if he can only work a certain amount of hours.
That's right.
You know, or is there anything that the city has for a temporary?
And para could, I know Colorado para had limitations on para retirees too. Um, as far as working in other para jobs.
Yeah.
What, no matter what their category was, but they're, cause they were considered a para retiree. And then you're back working for a para organization, so.
In Ramsey County, uh, we had deputies who had retired and then came back and worked part-time, they just couldn't. Generate benefits, they couldn't get sick leave, they couldn't get vacation, accumulated vacation, they couldn't get, uh, retirement, they couldn't.
Right.
Medical. Everything was straight cash and, I mean, straight wage net.
Yeah.
Well, Sue could check that out.
And if it just goes by hours per year, then you're fine.
Yeah.
Cause it's not gonna, but if it's hours per week, we need to make sure that we're not, we're not, um, overstepping at all.
Yep.
I remember Cheryl saying something about that before too, yeah.
Yeah, Race has got some top questions, uh, portable generator necessary, he, he needs that, I believe, and I think he said there was one time a motion made, but it was never followed through.
Um, there was back and, and I had the paperwork and I don't have it with me tonight, he just kinda wanted to get the process started, get the thoughts going, there was. Talk about it and at once twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I think that's when, uh.
He was a motion made to. Get estimates.
I think that's when we were painting curbs that time, had no way of running the. Sprayer, sprayer. And, uh, I guess, you know.
Even forgetting the door up or whatever we're doing.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
Yep.
So he just needs to go get one. And, uh, do we have to set a dollar amount?
I don't think so.
I mean, it's a, it's a piece of equipment we need to perform city functions.
You should get a good one, not a piece of crap.
Yes.
Yeah. And I think we've already approved it years ago.
I know too.
Do we need to make a motion again or just refer to the previous motion?
Yeah, just refer to the previous motion, I did, I, I know we did, I know we talked about it.
Being on the idea of the generator. Is if we get something like that, can he do the building out here, do we need to hire somebody else to have to clean the outside of this building? The cobwebs and stuff are disgusting.
Well, I mean, he can just use.
Okay. I didn't know if we had to hire that out.
We got receptacle is back here, if it's a three prong two twenty or what's back there, but.
Okay.
No, no idea. So cold, uh, side of the shop, it was mentioned a long time ago about heating and maybe finishing off the other. Uh, south half of the shed, we got a cement floor in there now, you know, um. Would we just have him take some bids from people about insulating or tinning it? Side walls rough. And, uh, you know, come back to us, it, it's not a nine one one deal, but.
No, but.
Get it done sometime.
Maybe it'd be a good inside job for a small contractor.
That's right, absolutely, especially winter coming up.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. Okay, okay. So, yeah, he can just get some bids and see what, what's out there, tractor mower. Looking into potential trading tractor. Rush more for offset disc mower.
Maybe you should just bring us a. Proposal.
Yeah. Looks like they have one for thirty-nine. I mean, would you get rid of that one that goes on the three-point hitch? Or would you keep that? Because there is places you might wanna just back in and. Mow off what you can.
Probably aren't gonna get much for it anyway.
That's right, you're not gonna, you're just gonna give it away, yeah.
Well, he said here, he told me that a new one without a trade is eleven seven. If he doesn't have a trade, so he was, I thought he thought he was thinking to be better if he traded. I don't know what an R two forty is.
And him and I talked about this, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and, um. So the one we currently have, he doesn't have as much use for as something that. Where he can drop the blade and run along the side of the tractor off the P T O, but.
Can we? We could.
This, there's, yeah, this is no nine one one here either, this time of the year.
We could, we could act.
Talking going and then when we see, we can discuss it more.
Yeah, and some of this, I think we could just wait and have it when we do our next budget meeting too, cause it's gonna, next year's dollars for the most part.
Yeah, that's a probably a good idea because some of this has to do with, uh, what he wants, a wishlist.
Yeah.
We done over the.
He also, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna back up a little bit, the portable generator, he was also, um. Talking about getting, maybe getting a mobile pressure washer, one of those I B C totes. So that if he was washing like the graffiti he was talking about, he could power wash it off versus grinding it.
Yeah, don't grind it anymore.
So, and he said, he's just, you know, suggesting maybe if there was a mobile power washer and one of those totes that he would be.
I got a toad.
Clean better.
I got half a dozen of them.
So can, is it the city purchases one then from, I mean, how does that, I don't know how that works?
Or you'd only be using it once.
Or, or does he?
Borrow it.
You know, donate it, do we cry, I don't know.
Yeah. All right, John had a good idea to put the rest of this when we have another budget meeting, sounds like a deal. Um. Talked about, uh, water and sewer update, Brian, that service, anything from Brian at all or?
No, I told him about it, um, he asked me to, I came again today and I just remembered about an hour ago.
Okay, um. Community comment, anybody?
We had some water problems, when you turn the water down, the water tower, I think he gave somebody a bill. We have a, um, our old water supply. It, uh, it caused, she often jerked and. Have issues because we had, you know, water pressure and I wasn't home at the time and I didn't know the water pressure was falling. I think he gave somebody.
Yeah, he dropped it off here, yep.
Yeah. And I didn't can we, the first bill we tried with. They're both overdue now. So I didn't know this, we were, so yeah, we'll give that to. If there was anything wanted to. To, to help with. You know, two. One dollars, one thousand. Fifty-seven and one was for one thirty-five. He had to come and adjust the R L. Because it was, um, the water pressure was so low for so long. And then, um. There was a leak and. On a fitting that he had to fix.
Well, I think of. If what we did.
I know the notice, um, Ray scan unfortunately can't hear, he did say the notice was posted on the eighteenth, and I don't know when you came in. That's all I know, the July eighteenth. That the notice was, there was a notice posted.
Yeah, he told me that, I'm not sure where he posted that.
But.
Cause they go to.
I'm looking at the Good Thunder, I watched that, the neighborhood. And the Good Thunder, and I looked on all of them. I didn't.
Cause what are our three, are three are the post office, the red iron? Here and then our website, the city website, and then once I started, I started dating, um, Facebook.
That community, that community thing's not a true. Website, if that's what you're talking about.
Would we set a precedent if we paid these and?
Well, I think we have, didn't we pick some something to make? Put an anti-backful valve in the sewer found here at one time. Who were respecting somebody's basement?
I looked at the Facebook clerk and I looked at the.
Yeah, maybe we did.
I don't think anybody started telling that until I started, cause it was kind of a process. Um, so, yeah, I don't think, I don't think they touched it until I started.
This is kind of an unusual thing too, you know, that we had. This happen. We'd say at one time.
I think whatever you see on that.
Two ninety-two fifty.
Community page.
Two ninety-two.
For the.
Two ninety-two.
Do what the city says.
It's, it's not a city sponsored site.
No.
Um, and it's not, I know it's not one of the three.
No, we.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I look at it, I don't. Post anything on there.
Yeah, if you get warning in the future, which we probably won't be paying the water tower for another ten years, but there could be something else. Can you? Put it on standby or something so this doesn't happen again?
Plug it, I, the last time it happened, I told Ron Cowell about it. And he said, um. Yeah, he said, just I'll let you know next time we have to do anything like that.
Yeah.
And then I didn't know it was happening, and I wasn't home and so I got home and it was just chug, 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 chug. It was, it was trying to get water and it couldn't and it was shaking and having a connection. Anyway, so I had the plumber come out that installed it.
Yeah, cause you're on the board now to make sure that we notify you.
Right, I heard that, that I, that we are on the board and I'll just unplug it then, um.
Botanic council?
I'm thinking that we should go ahead and reimburse him. Um. This, this one time. Because. None of us really knew what was gonna happen. And maybe it's a learning experience, there could be other folks in town that have the same system that we need to be sure that.
The timber apartments or whatever they're called, cause we call, yeah, um. Dave Stranitzky also contacted, I think he talked to Race, I think, I think Paul talked to Race, cause that's how we got both the numbers on the board. And then we call another gentleman on South Holiday who does, um.
Yep.
Home dialysis, you know, water issues, this year was the exception, I think, with everything that goes on. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Timberbrook thing, that has something to do with the hot water heaters up there with David.
Right.
I remember.
They're on demand, maybe?
Yeah.
Wasn't enough water to make them.
Yeah.
I got.
And, uh, earn a month and they're really expensive hot water heaters.
They didn't.
No, he just said that.
And I know they'd be doing that one before. Oh, yeah, I put it on there, I tried to.
Learning thing, I guess, what else can you say?
And you got all the people running water as soon as the water.
Like the one, but they have to set everywhere.
Yeah. Like it runs, maybe your own, study like he was, maybe he would have, maybe not, you know, but.
Well, they get done discussing and just make a motion paid, it'll be done to move on.
I make a motion, we reimburse.
Anything I put on the city will also be on city of Good Thunder page, not, none of the like.
Not the clerk.
None, well, the clerk one will be on there, but it won't be on. Community. I don't know.
It gets on a community page.
Yeah, the neighborhood, there's, those ones, it won't be, I won't put anything on there, I only put it on.
Official city page.
And then the clerk one, yep.
Okay, Sue, Tom made a motion to reimburse for the cost of this.
I mean, even just half of the cost.
Well, gee, she's happy with half.
I have, I think I've come out twice. And it just, I guess what hurt to me was when Ron Cowell said to me. You guys aren't on city, are you? And I said, Ron, yes, we've been on city for twenty-three years, we've lived. In that house for twenty-three years.
Well, that water's put in when you move the house in there, wasn't it?
He said, you don't have sewer, do you? And I said. You told us we couldn't get on water if we didn't have sewer, yeah, we have sewer.
Okay.
Half, then.
Okay. Tom made a motion to pay half of the bill presented, some in a second.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for your time, patience.
Like I said, I paid the bill today because. It's gonna be overdue and then there was giving.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Hey, alrighty, um. Um, anybody else been telling you had something?
Just to give you guys a little bit of an update on the, uh, Thunder Valley Archery Park and the events that were held down there. Uh, we had only four people show up that particular day to shoot. Uh, however, from the twenty-first till today, there's been twenty-three people down there using the archery park.
Oh, my.
For all purposes. So you get an idea of what's the use of. It's sitting down, there's no way to really monitor the bathroom. Now we have a way, so.
Yeah.
Four people have used it since twenty-first.
Your hard work will pay off.
Yep, and then there's been, uh, peak visitors.
Deer?
That, oh, people just walk down there, drill bin and walk around and.
Look at it, okay, okay.
Oh, yeah. But we're just looking around. Only jogs through there.
Yeah. Well, that might be handy to, uh, know. In case we have more. Four wheeler issues.
Mm-hmm, yep. All right.
And we've had them here, so.
Anybody else under community comment? Anybody on the? Internet? If not, we can move on to unfinished business, we got a Burkhart, Burkhart mid-year review. Be present in October meeting. We have that report in here, if any questions, I have one thing underlined here. I didn't quite maybe understand, maybe John or Sue. Uh. On this one page here. It says, we sampled fifteen receipt batches to test for the first six months of twenty three. Or seven of the section city staff were not able to provide support. For the deposit.
So that. Well. Sue was here, what, two days when they came, that was her third day here, I think. And I told her when we were going through this, that their visit helped me get organized, now some of it could have been from me. So it's just a matter of keeping. Banyan's kind of a funny program, plus we deposit deposits, we. If it's a check, we deposit electronically, we do it right here, we don't have to go to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but yes, there were some that we had a very hard time finding and I. I don't remember. What the ratio was between. The change in me, but. But, but I feel like. Since that visit and that day, I've gotten. Where I knew then how to organize stuff and that should be flowing through with um. Soon now too, so.
Does that kind of mean like the uh, the water bills? That were in that. Well, they, where they would have came out in December, right?
Now, these wouldn't have been any of the water bills, all of that's going through, these are. These are batches which are we, we're doing any of this, counting side. So.
All right. Support the deposit, so I just wondered where that. Where that money came from to make that deposit.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Um, there was one thing that Paul had pointed out though when we hear and I forgot to do it last month, he said we should do this every January. Is give the city clerk the ability to pay bills in the interim between meetings. I think he was saying like two thousand, I think that's. Five hundred, that where he. They'll say tomorrow something comes in and it's due, you know, it's the beginning of October before the next. He can go ahead and do those checks coordinated with you to come in and do the signature seconds of the interest, so they don't have to go through the bill of approval. As is, but we'll catch it then on the, on the backend.
I think he's told us that about the last two or three times that some, like you just said, them late bills that come in, they didn't get paid timely because. They came in after the meeting.
Right, he said we should be doing that every January, and the other thing is now with E F T, Sue's gotten the E F Ts, uh so. I think everybody, including Kellen, will be uh now.
On an E F T.
Um, being paid checked to bank.
Okay.
And I did come across, that was approved by council. It was in twenty one or twenty two, I don't remember, I stumbled across it when I was looking for somewhere else where it. It was given, the authority was given to set it up, so, but. Now without, once um, I'm not being paid anymore than. Now everybody will be getting an E F T, so there's, you won't have the opportunity to review the checks when you come in like you were doing. You know, signing them in that interim, but that, that approval should also be, so I'll, I'll make that a motion.
And we, you know, I know there. Have you seen that form Sue where you gain your uh four point, well, you don't. Until first year, but your, your time, your P T O time. There used to be a paper that had time earned, time taken.
Okay.
Have you ever seen that?
Like a printout from Banyan, you mean?
Or what? It's keeping track of your P T O hours, have you seen?
I have not, but I know Banyan keeps track of it, I mean, it's on, it's on our check stops.
All right.
So it says what we get and then the accrual year to date, and then if there's any used, it'll show up on.
Because uh, a year ago or so, when you start the new year, year to date, January first payroll in January, that's year to date. And if you were bonded or. You were here at four point six two, should be year to date. Well, on one of them, it was like thirteen point some hours, that, that was wrong.
Unless it carried over.
Nope, you ain't supposed to do that, right? You know, you can carry it over, but year to date, that means. January first till that first payroll is year to date. And then there was another line item with the total.
So then there was another line item underneath that with the carryover.
Yep, with the carryover, yep, the farthest line over here.
I have not seen anything like that, but.
I can maybe find it.
I can look and see what I can come up with, um.
But I mean. We're all personnel. We should be reviewing that to make sure that's done correctly.
Yeah, yeah, for, yeah. Yeah.
Because it wasn't done correctly that time, because it was thirteen point six two, I believe, and it should only have been four point six two. And I brought it to the attention here, but I don't think we followed through. So, but anyway, yeah, we, if we can get that.
You made the motion now.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion to give the city clerk approval to pay bills in between meetings for thirty five hundred and to do the approval for. Check to bank for the payroll checks, and then that review will do at these meetings.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Yeah.
Well, he, he, he's recommended that we've done that, um, if it just hasn't been the trust. Why never push?
A lot of these bills are net within thirty days, well, if it comes in the day after.
Yeah.
Our meeting. No, get to thirty day now.
Okay, now we got L P L Investments additional nineteen three forty.
Yes, that was done.
Okay.
Um. And that was transferred, so that one's completed.
All right. Now we have a couple, three resolutions, two resolutions to uh. Um, approved tonight. Just had him here a minute ago, where the, there they are. First one should be for Ron. Yep, first one should be for Ron, uh, resolution uh. Two thousand and twenty through dash two, twenty three dash two, uh vacancy for city council. Am I, am I make a motion to approve that resolution?
That's just saying that we have a vacancy?
It's accepting Ron's uh resignation and, and declaring a vacancy.
I'll, I'll second, I'll make that a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then there is uh. Ones for the. Bank here.
So, yeah, we needed two, we needed those for Minster wanted a resolution. Stating that um, the resolution for the transfer of funds for the C D.
And that's resolution number two thousand twenty three dash three, so may I make a motion to approve that?
How long were they again, the CDs, do you remember?
One is uh nine months and one is ten months, I think uh. Good, uh, Community Bank, I think was the nine and Minster the ten, or vice versa, gonna be okay. We're talking, we'll spend a lot of money, so.
Yeah. Right when we invested, then it's the, the next meeting we're spending money.
Great.
Uh, somebody make a motion on that one then?
I'll make a motion.
Someone second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. And then we have another resolution for uh donations. Well, that's under new business, can we do it right now?
Sure.
Long you got it right there. We have two donations. Two hundred dollar donation to the fire department and a hundred twenty five dollar donation to the fire department. Twenty two thousand twenty three dash four and five, so make a motion to approve those two.
I'll make that motion.
Someone second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. And okay, new water meter estimates Dakota Supply Group. We have a couple of them, right?
This, this one just came in.
Actually, there's three of them, because we got, the last one was not in your packets, but I. I said it there this morning. So all three of them gave us the estimates.
Yep.
Well, they read. Like I said, it would have really changed their tune then, didn't they? But this latest one?
In the, oh, one and up, shouldn't it, and up like, you know, like uh fif- fifteen thousand? There's no one more than that. Twenty five thousand? That what you're looking at, Jeff? There's two totals right here and there.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking, but this does equal their total on that, so I'm wondering if they just bulked them all together. Those look at.
I was just looking at primarily first year cost, the quota was twenty six four. Um. Uh, that's. Um, Badger, they were twenty fourth, almost four. And Ferguson was twenty three or twenty two thousand, Ferguson over time looks to be almost like the most expensive to convert to. But. I don't know, I think we. May need time to absorb more of this and we make a. Full decision and discussion.
Yeah, because we aren't gonna do nothing and remain in this year anymore.
Probably not.
If we have to replace a meter, I believe we have maybe four or five meters left yet, so. We just replace them with what we got and continue on until we can. Come up with some good. Firm numbers on all these. What was the name of the last guy that was here?
Lee, Lee Martin, it was Badger, that was the cellular, that's the top one.
Yeah, that's this one, yeah.
Um.
That's this one, yeah, yeah, that was our last guy, right? He's the one that sold us our meters that we have right now, right? Isn't that what he said?
No, I thought that was Dakota Supply.
There you go, Dakota Supply up there.
Really?
Okay.
The other ones we've been.
But this guy said he could adapt to the meters we have right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
Just replace them as they go bad.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think we have that option pretty much with all of them.
Good, right.
Um. The rub is gonna become as, how long is that handheld gonna? Day working?
Well, should we uh put this under unfinished business and pick it up another time? Yeah, sounds like a. Great idea. Um, and then we got a couple of uh. Well, fall cleanup days here.
That came up, I think in the budget meeting, I don't know if we.
Yeah, I didn't talk to anybody physically about that at work yet either. Thought of that this morning and then I forgot all about it again. We just talked, well, maybe it would be nice if we could get some other cleanup data, just cause we have money in the budget, yeah, rep this budget yet. And you know, like middle October, like that, and I. I didn't actually talk to them whether to actually set that up.
You know who our contact is, um, Tom Ford, we need to call. Um, L B, L J P.
Well. Like for misses and stuff like that, you would just call the number and talk to the, they would put you in, 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 into that. Actually, if even for scheduling this, you could probably just. Call the. Six two five nineteen sixty eight number. And ask for whoever.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know how much publication we want to put out on it though, um. We could still reuse, I think I, I don't think I, um. All the cost would probably be the same for like appliances and air conditioners and tires.
Yeah.
I would have same, and I think, I think that envelope is still in there with all that.
Yeah, it would just have to all be arranged, you know. And I was gonna try to get that, some of that done, I forgot all about that until this morning and I just didn't have a chance to. Deal with it.
You want Sue to give a call and see?
Yeah, I wanna just give them a call, and that way there too, I heard a couple of complaints that. Knocking the boxes over. Anybody get that complaint?
Boxes, what do you mean?
The curbs.
When they set them down there.
Yeah, they set them down, they go through so fast, that, you know, they're.
Especially the garbage pickup, they just, they drop them like they're driving away before they drop them, yeah.
The lids, call, tell them that. Busting the.
I did last time, so just last week I had to order some more. Okay, and so I did tell them that they're.
Yeah.
They're being broken because they're being dropped.
Yeah.
Off from the truck.
Going again.
They like take, they take off before they're even.
Yeah, yeah, there it's, it's usually just the um garbage ones, the recycled ones, I haven't noticed.
Yeah, I think of my garbage, the one that's busted too.
Yeah, I've replaced more garbage ones than I have since I've started. But I can call and see, you want to do like the mid October, see if there's something available?
Yeah, see if we can do that.
All right, uh, next, uh, schedule another budget meeting?
Yeah, I think we need to keep moving on that, um, Sue did get a preliminary. I don't know if I brought that. For our stuff to come in, but just to. Go in and get into a little more detail with everybody, I think would be good.
Well, yeah, we, when we met the other night, we didn't even know what our tax revenue was gonna be.
Yeah, I opened that this morning, I stayed in for a minute.
We didn't know anything, yeah.
So we got that now?
Well, it's two hundred and two.
That's a state aid.
But then the tax about the.
It's an estimate yet, but.
Tax, uh, was like four hundred and four.
Yes, right, right in that ballpark, up roughly.
We would have to base our levy if you wanted one off of that, is my understanding.
Yeah, I did do some reading and I sent you a link today.
Yep, I saw, yeah, I looked, I found that one.
Um, which I'll get with you sometime this week to go look at too, but I, I think we just need to set another one and um.
Yeah.
I think you have a better understanding than some of that, how. That tax ace from part works, cause I've never been in that world before, but maybe it can help enlighten Sue and I too, just a workshop.
Yeah, yeah.
And next Monday, I'll be, I'm gonna be getting neck deep in Harvest here soon too, I don't know exactly when, but.
I'm gonna be really sure to help next week. Would next Friday work? Because I have to go to Rochester for a scan anyway, would that possibly work for anybody at?
Fifteenth?
Five, no, next Friday. Would be the twenty second.
I'm gone.
I'm gone. That evening.
I'm gone for a week from the twenty first through the twenty seventh.
And it has to be in by the thirtieth, the preliminary has to be. Submitted by the thirtieth, so.
September thirtieth?
Yep.
Well, then how about like the Monday of the twenty fifth?
I'm gone.
You're gone, we need you.
Is there anything this week that works? Thursday, there's a meeting already here.
Uh, Wednesday night, I got a meeting already.
You know, Friday can't. I gotta hope pigs Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Hey then.
Yeah, well, how about tomorrow night?
Yeah, tomorrow night would work if we can have it that.
We probably can't do that.
So we didn't post it.
It has to be posted.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we're, we don't have to really.
Could be called, be a call to continuance.
I don't know if we can do that. We probably can't do that.
We didn't close the meeting.
Oh, oh, thanks for all your work down there, Kellen.
Wait.
Yeah, Kellen.
We could have it as part of this meeting, it's nine thirty at night. Let's go home, we'll be meeting tomorrow night.
There you go.
We can do that.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can meet tomorrow night at what time?
I don't know.
Well, do you want to keep it at seven? Cause if you do it at six, a lot of times, not everybody's here. People forget. Just saying. So we can do it at six if y'all can make it.
I mean, you know.
You know, it's.
I guess I'll be around tomorrow. Tom, what time would work best for you getting off, we're getting here?
I should be able to make it by six.
Yeah.
Six?
I don't know what else, I don't know how else to get it done.
That's right, because like John says, he's got, he's gonna help out in Harvest.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be swamped next week.
I'm gonna be gone too.
You're gonna be gone? God, you're gonna run the show yourself, we'll see you later.
So, should we put out any notice that we're gonna continue this meeting then tomorrow night or just do it?
I think we just do it.
Okay, all right.
We don't need to post it anywhere?
Just we're open meeting right now, you know.
Yeah.
That's the point.
So do you want me to post it? We don't need to do any other postings tomorrow night or tomorrow quickly, no?
We're just gonna reconvene tomorrow night.
Alright.
Six A.
Everything else is pretty much boring stuff anyway, so.
But we have to talk about, uh, that we scheduled the meeting, um, sick and safe. Leave time. On their new business, we already did the donations.
The sick and safe is one of this, the new law that has to be, it goes into effect January first.
Yeah.
And that updates. So in other words, you have to allow up to forty eight hours. Forty eight hours a year of safe, sick and safe time. So they can agree, but there's different options you can do, and that's just something we need to start thinking about, cuz we have to have a policy in place by the first of the year.
Alright, who, who can help you draw up that policy?
Um, I've been working with.
Or the league got it?
There's, there's a lot of information on the league, um, I watched a webinar today.
Alright.
Try to get some information on that.
Alright.
That one's gonna be interesting to implement too.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Sue.
No, I was gonna say, I don't think it's gonna be as, depending on the option we choose, it could be very easy or it could be very difficult. Don't say easy, cuz that's not right.
Data Minnesota would be difficult.
We're lucky, we only got a couple employees.
Well, no, cuz we got the fire department. Fire department's in there too, isn't it thirty hours a year? What is it, third, or what is it?
They don't accrue leave though, they don't accrue any vacation though.
No, we don't have, no, okay.
They're volunteer.
Does the word volunteer help on that or not?
That I'll have to check into, yeah, we'll have to discuss it, but I just started kind of digging into it.
At least you're three months in advance, yeah. So, you know, we have three months.
Oh, that's a good thing.
Thank you for bringing that forward. And we'll look into it each, each month from now on. Okay, I said on our new business, uh. I did run across some things after searching to when you type up the minutes. I don't know if that pertains, but it says that maybe you should sign those minutes also where you put down there, you know.
Yep, I started doing that, to do, to do. Last month, I think I'll sign, I think I've signed them, I haven't signed them when I put them on. The web pay or on the, um, yeah, the webpage, but I will sign them going forward and when we file them.
Uh, okay.
So the copies that you guys have, I won't be signing, but once you guys approve it, then I'll sign it, put it in the file.
Oh, okay, alright, yeah.
Unless you want it done differently, that's fine.
No, that's fine, no, it makes sense, you know. We gotta do it right.
Signed after the.
I, I was thinking that, yeah, and I know there are some too that I can. I'll, I'll make sure that they're all done.
Okay, uh, miscellaneous business Chapel Street Apartments, their water rate really bumped up.
Yeah, so in, in there, I did a four year or, you know, a four year look back and their average just went. Covid probably increased it sometime at a high of sixty eight hundred, uh, for one year, average for one year. It went down in twenty two to fifty two hundred, and then for this year, it's nineteen thousand, um. Their race said. Working with Ashing, there was some problem, but we don't know what it is. Um, we were gonna replace the meter, but until we don't, cuz that's I guess a one, one and a half or it's a bigger meter.
Bigger meter, yeah.
And so that'd be fifteen hundred dollars, and that's guessing on who we're gonna approve. So I went through, oh, I went through and I just did. And adjust, I did an average and I, I, what I told, uh, no, I forget his name.
Yeah, I know.
Um, I told him, I said, this is what I'm kind of gauging it at, you know, cuz it, his bill was two thousand one hundred ninety four dollars. Um. I said.
We see one in there and actually look to see if there's water running.
Yes, yeah.
And, yeah. He's checked all that.
But I don't know if they have water softeners or toilets running, you know.
Yeah.
Um. Even though we buy a new water meter now, it should be able to adapt to ever. Electronic head we put on it, right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, it's the way it sounded.
Right, and then depending on which kind we can give, we'll get also the, the leak detection too, or third.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I basically told him, I said, for this amount, I can't just go in and reduce your bill. Um, but I, I did do an average and I came up with like, uh, I think it was. Uh, six hundred and seventy dollars, basically. I said, pay that right now so you have something on, but I think until we know what's. Until we get it actually new meter, I don't know what we can actually tell him.
Wind cup?
Wind cup, wind cup, wind cup, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we just, let's, let's have a new meter put on.
Well, until we know what kind of meter we're gonna get, um. We don't know which one we should buy.
Well, with his bill at that, it's still pay for itself.
Well, you know, I think what Ray said is, this guy was gonna give him a key where that is.
Yep.
Take the reading right off the meter.
Right.
Try that for a quarter or two and see if. It isn't reading right, go right to the meter and read that and see if it's, you know, there could be a leaky toilet.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so.
Could be anything in there.
Uh, you're for, will you be forgiving, uh, thirteen hundred bucks?
Yeah, basically.
So, you know, um, I guess.
But I mean, we have nothing to base it on, cuz we don't have meters that one will tell us if there's a leak. I mean, that will be one good thing with making the switch, but.
If Race would read it every Monday morning for a month.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Then we get an idea.
Yeah.
Just read the manual reading inside the building every Monday morning.
Yeah.
For a month. And that'll dictate whether.
Well, I mean, at least if it's still high, we still don't know what we got going, but we're probably gonna end up putting a meter in then anyway.
Right, right. If it's still hot, but yeah, so, but it, I didn't wanna just arbitrarily just go in and say, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Eliminate that much without a council approval.
Yeah, you're right. So somebody wanna make that a motion to that affect to what, six seventy, you said?
Uh, yeah, I, yeah, somewhere in that area. Um, yes, to, um, I'll make a motion to adjust his bill. To remove that basically thirteen.
That's for that co- this quarter or for.
Before, this is, this is for the, um. Uh, last April to June billing, the first billing that I said, sent out, so.
You made that a motion someone second? Oh, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Right.
Okay, that was the Chapel Street Apartments, reduced the water bill that same, same thing, and then a residence bill here.
The one for, uh, Zory, that was just, uh, I don't know if it was something I did on it, so eight oh one. This is the Zory at eight oh one Main Street, it got billed to the Bucks somehow. And all I did, I removed it from them and we sent him this bill, so this. This was, this is zero balance, we're just zeroed one and, and, and I talked to Glenn and he's, he's gonna pay that, he said, so.
Perfect. Okay, zoom or alternative?
So I have been checking with some of the other, um, Vernon Center and Amboy, they do not have Zoom. After Covid, um, after. Things started to get back to a normal, they stopped with their meetings. So they do an audio recording and then they just do their minutes. They don't put anything on YouTube or anything like that, um. Jamesville. Does a, they video it, but then they put it on YouTube later, it's not a live like we have here. Um, Eagle Lake does a live stream like you would a church service. So my question is, do we wanna continue, no, it doesn't matter, we wanna continue with Zoom? Um. Or what do we wanna do with that? Do we wanna continue on as we're doing it? Do we want to change it? My, I like being able to see. When I do the minutes, if I miss something, I like that part of it, um, and we do have the equipment. So my suggestion is we keep, we don't do a live feed, we'll still record it, we can put it on YouTube still, like a day or two later. Because it does help now tonight with Race, he's not able to be here. But we don't. We don't live stream like we're doing now. So it's a quote, I mean, that's, we're videoing it, but nobody else is gonna see it, it's not up until it gets put on YouTube.
There's no inner reaction either.
Oh, Race is on.
Oh, we, Sue and I kind of talked about, keep, I mean, it'd be, I, doing identically to how we have it now.
Uh, turn this up.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we're fine.
Uh, so what we had talked about is it'd be similar to how we're doing it now, except for. Um, instead of the live being open to the public, you just give that to. Either a cit- like city employees or like people like me who, or not people like me, but employees of the city that can't otherwise be there. Or in the event that you ever have someone that can't make it, they have to present on something, they can't make a meeting. But that way you don't have it open to the public necessarily, but you still have a live link. And then that's something too, that because this program already records. Uh, we're, we'd be doing everything exactly the same way, it's just that you wouldn't have the, um, the live, the live stream itself would not be open to the public. So it'd just be a matter of either changing the meeting, um, ID or changing the password to it and just giving that to. Um, whoever we'd need to give that to.
So, so if, uh, example, I couldn't make physically a meeting, I could zoom in then yet.
Yes, we could send you the password, like.
As long as I am fully viewed. On whatever you're recording it on.
Yes, yep.
And I can't do it verbally if I have to do it.
Like Race right now, we don't see Race, but we hear him.
Yeah, but a council person has.
A council person has to be visible.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, if you're going to be, if, yeah, if you're home, whatever, you have to be visible on here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only reason I'm not is cuz I have my kid for a while, so.
Yeah, so. I agree that we should do just what you're recommending, we have that. Um. Ability to open it up for employees and council people if they can't make a physical meeting. And that. Um, if, if somebody wants to view the video, I will have the video.
It'll be on YouTube, just like we're doing now, we're uploading it to YouTube a day or two later.
Do we even have to put it on YouTube? But I mean, I don't know if we ever made a motion to approve putting it on YouTube. It just showed up there.
I don't know, I had a hard time, I mean, I found the motion to purchase the equipment. But I don't, I never did get a chance to look to see if there was a motion on, I'm assuming there was a motion to put it. Out there, you could make a motion to not, I mean, I do, it does get a lot of views.
Do those others tell you you contacted, did they put it on YouTube after the fact?
Um, Jamesville does. Eagle Lake, no, not, not as far as I'm aware. And Vernon Center and Amboy don't have any, um, video of it, it's only all, it's only audio. And when I brought it up at that, um, council of government, they all kind of. Said, why do you still do it?
Well, that's, we, you know, I, I, I'm trying to remember, it seemed like, uh. Chris even asked, why would you want to even video it?
Sure.
Why would you even wanna do that? Because it, it means nothing. Uh, the official minutes are what is the official.
Correct, yeah, this is not an official record.
And all it does is just. Heartache. And, and I don't know.
Race has something.
I will say it is easier to some, I mean, there, there have been times, like tonight worked out for me that I can still watch in the background. Um, and listen, but there have been times that I haven't been able to, um, do that. Or if I need to go back from my own record on, um, something that you guys kind of instructed me to do. Um, it's a lot easier for me to just be able to throw that on my phone while I'm at work and. Do something else and just have that in the background as I kind of sift through what, what it is I was trying to remember, um. So it's convenient in that sense for, for me personally, or that's how, that's how it. How I use it, I should say.
I mean, I, I, I would say we should do the audio. Recording, cuz I think that helps doing missed.
Can you keep that? secured by giving Race a code or Tom or.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then he could watch the whole video or everything?
Cuz it's on the webpage, so the login and everything is on there, so you just click on that and that's how the community can get into it. Um, but if you wanted to post it, then it would be an invite only, and for so an email would have to go to. Race or one of the council.
You can't have one without the other, though, I mean, if we're gonna video it, then it's gonna end up on YouTube.
Well, it doesn't have to.
So there.
Council, isn't it?
The, on YouTube, you have a variety of options on what you can do in terms of listing it, um, as, what we're doing right now, anyone can look it up and see. Um, but there are options too that you can set a video as a private or an invite only, so that only people that receive the. Um, the invite from the city or the city account. Or that's the only people that can see it, or else if you look up at the City of Good Thunder YouTube page, um, it won't show up to the standard person. And if it does, they don't have access to watch it, um, if it's uploaded in that way.
But I would, I'd be in favor of that.
I, I'm afraid though that if that is a public. That becomes public, that, that's a public record then, and so if you're gonna video it. Um, anybody can watch it then.
No, no.
No. Go ahead, Race.
Yeah, only if you're uploading it like we do now, but there are options on YouTube to be able to upload it in a way that's private. And an invite only, so you, the account holder, like the City of Good Thunder YouTube page would send a link to. Whoever we'd be sharing it to, and in that event, only that person that the, or only the people that received the link. That's the only people that the video even comes up to, if they don't have that link. Then if you go onto the City of Good Thunder YouTube page, you won't, it won't show up to if you don't have the link.
I don't think, I, I just don't believe you can do that. Well, there is, if you have it, it's public and you have, then it, then it's.
But now, but now it's like the minutes, I mean, you can request a copy. But there's certain documents that if you need to, if you wanna request, you have to fill out the proper paperwork. So would that fall under this as well?
More, more than likely, that's my point.
You know, but then they wanna actually have to come in here and fill out the paperwork to get that and then.
Right, but, but there again, I, it seems like I can remember Chris just saying, why would you even video it? You know? Why, why would you even do that?
We could have Sue reach out to infer his opinion again and.
Well, like, what Race was saying, it helps him out. Can we ju- can we just audio it then?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
We can audio it, yeah, and a lot of, like I said, that's what Amboy and Vernon Center do, they audio it. And then it just stays, it doesn't go anywhere, it stays here, you know.
If somebody can come in and wanna listen to that, and you have to provide it, cuz it's a public.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a public.
But it doesn't go.
It's no different than if they were here tonight, if they wanted to come in tomorrow and listen to it, they'd have that right.
That's right.
The only difference is, I think if we. To put it on YouTube, and I don't know if you can lock the comments, it eliminates people coming in here to record it. If, if that's an issue.
You can't set a video to not have comments, you can close comments to any video.
See it and watch it, but you can't comment on it even on the YouTube.
Well, yeah.
Take it under advisement. I mean, you know, I could do some checking, I will check with Kennedy. And see.
That's probably a pretty good idea.
Yeah, and I think that. I don't think any of us really have a problem with it actually being on. You know, broadcast. The problem is, is that. Three months later, it's regurgitated. And a lot of times it's regurgitated in a wrong way. Or half, you know what I mean, it's, it's, it becomes almost like fun. I think you made the mention, you know, it, it, you know, the idea of having something you said four years ago.
Right, yeah.
Is really not, and still out there, and people can still play with it.
Yeah.
You know? Isn't really settling.
Yeah.
And since Covid's over, we shouldn't have to put up with that unsettling feeling, and so. Uh, that's where I'm coming from as far as on this whole video and all that kind of stuff now, somebody wants to come in and listen to the audio. That's their right. You know, they can certainly do that, but that's a lot different than.
Well, I, I, I really think there's no need for us to post it on YouTube, I mean, that's not a requirement.
No.
No, cuz the written, the written amendments are the official record, so.
No, I, I, I don't think that, I don't think it is either, but I don't really think that we should even have to have it on video. You know, recorded video, in my opinion.
And then it becomes the issue of money that was spent on all of this. I'm just, you know.
You can still record from it, though.
What's that?
You can probably still use it for the recording.
I'm assuming. The audio.
Do we need a motion to audio only or?
Or do you wanna just talk with Chris first?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I just wanted, that's my opinion.
Another refreshing thing, his bill is less than a hundred dollars. Another refreshing thing, his bill is less than a hundred dollars.
Eighty four dollars.
Pardon, that was eighty four dollars.
Yeah.
So that's. Well, change. Um, one other thing, did you, John or Sue, did you guys get ahold of the Mapleton people for this cameras, security camera?
I called them, left them two messages.
Oh, really?
Haven't got anything back, I'll call them again tomorrow.
Okay, because they need to be all reset.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, yeah, because I don't, I don't think they're, they're recording or anything, so.
And Sue does not want it on her phone, and you made comments before, didn't think it should have ever been on any.
Right, right.
So. Alright, anything else under miscellaneous? So, do we call this a German tonight?[1755.18]